This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the District Attorney of the United States of America and am the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Manuel.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Plinkhammer.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt.
Von Hayden.
Here.
Well.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the November 13th, 2017 session of the Eau Claire City Council. Tonight is a big night for the City Council as we are entertaining a public discussion and a public hearing on our proposed budget for 2018. One of the major acts of any local government is to prepare or to receive and approve its annual budget. And we begin, actually, we're kind of late in our process. We've done a lot of work and now we're turning to the public to conduct a public hearing and hear what you have to say about the proposed budget that lays before us. That will take up a major part of our work, but we will begin with another item prior to that, so don't worry, though. We'll get to it. We do welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight, and we are grateful, as always, to Community Television for broadcasting and streaming these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. For those of you who wish to speak, I'll just briefly review the protocol. After I introduce an agenda item, we have a staff presentation, and then that item becomes welcome for public input. You can approach the podium when the item that is of interest to you has been introduced and spoken about. We do institute a five-minute speaking limit. We find that five minutes is a fair amount of time for people to make their point. It helps the meeting go along smoothly, and it gives the first person to speak a fair chance, as fair a chance as the last person to speak. We help you time your five minutes by a lighting system, which starts with a green light and ends with a red light. You do not need to take the whole five minutes, but they are there for you should you need them to make your point. Sometimes City Council members have questions of you after you make your presentation, so if you would linger at the podium for just a moment while I ask council members if they have questions for you. Our questions just help us clarify a point that we may find unclear. If you need any help, Ms. Merle, who sits right up here, will help you with any questions that you might have during the evening. And lastly, if you don't wish to speak but you would like to render a comment, there are written comment sheets at the back of chambers. They're on blue paper. You can write them out and leave them back there. They are distributed to us prior to our meeting tomorrow, and so we consider them equally as we would spoken comment tonight. With that introduction, we will begin our work for the evening with Item 1, which is a public hearing on street improvements that include 12th Street, Old Town Hall Road, Lurch Avenue, and Freedick Road. Mr. Solberg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If possible, I'd like to present on 12th Street first and then the second group of three projects, second. The first project is 12th Street from 100 feet south of Hawthorne Street to Locust Street. So here is a location map. Vine Street to the south, north is to the top of the screen. Hawthorne Street was a project approved earlier this year. 12th Street for the section here that is highlighted is the area in question tonight, ending at Locust Street. A large portion of this area was necessary to be constructed to tie in our utilities with Hawthorne. There was a small section that would have remained before you get to a new reconstructed area, and for that reason, we're bringing this section forward today. It does have sanitary sewer that dates back 90 years to 1927. So the utilities did need to be replaced. It was just trying to do it at the most cost-effective time. Here's the aerial drawing for that. Again, Hawthorne Street, Vine Street to the south. The existing street is 30 feet wide with concrete curb and gutter on each side. The sanitary sewer was built in 1927. The water main and storm sewer were built in 1974. The water main is six-inch water main. Our standard now minimum is eight-inch water main. There is sidewalk along 100% of the street, and its condition index is 50. What the project proposes is to replace all three of the utilities, replace the curb and gutter with new curb and gutter to the same width of 30 feet face-to-face, place a three-inch asphaltic surface, and sidewalk along 100% of the frontage where it exists currently. Construction on this would be done in conjunction with Hawthorne Street probably right away in the spring next year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg? I see none. Thank you. Are there members of the public tonight who came to speak about the project on 12th Street? Anyone here for the 12th Street project? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to the -- the next three projects are interrelated.
So the next three projects, we've been talking about since we had our engineering work session way last January with possible development. There have been a number of council actions that have taken place since then with annexation, site plan approvals, CSM approvals, and so forth. So this is the set of three streets that will accompany that development. We have Old Town Hall Road in its new location. The existing Town Hall Road comes next to Highway 93. This is Highway 93. This is Highway 94. This is the area of development, and this is previous development that had occurred. So you have Old Town Hall Road, Lurch Avenue, and Freedick Road that extends south of Lurch Avenue. Currently, Old Town Hall Road, I'll begin with Old Town Hall Road. It is a rural cross-section. It was annexed to the city, so it has a township cross-section, which is 22 feet wide of asphalt. There are currently no utilities within Old Town Hall Road, and the pavement is worn. We do not have a pavement condition index because we haven't rated that as it was in the township. What the project proposes is a 44-foot-wide street from Lurch Avenue to the north, and what that allows for is a two-way left turn lane or a dedicated left turn lane when you approach the intersection, bike lanes on each side, curb and gutter, a vegetated boulevard, and five-feet sidewalks along the entire length of both sides of Old Town Hall Road until we reach the point at the last developable lot. At that location, the sidewalk will discontinue on the west side, but it will continue on the east side and south side of Town Hall Road as it goes around the corner, very similar to the way Commonwealth Avenue is out by Best Buy. And as you approach Highway 53, there is no further development, and there is a steep grade on the left side. So topographically, it is prohibitive to continue the sidewalk around the corner, as well as it would not service any properties. As we continue around the corner and start running adjacent with the interstate, the pavement shrinks from 44 feet face-to-face where it is further to the south to eventually tie into the 22-foot width as it ties in with the existing Town Hall Road. Sidewalk extends to this point past the Mills Fleet Farm. Bike lanes continue along the full stretch. All three utilities will be constructed, water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. The water main to be constructed with this project will serve as the basis for providing water, the transmission of water, to this area of Eau Claire as it develops in the future. So this is really the first step to get the infrastructure in to help foster the growth if and when it occurs on the south side of the interstate. With the second project, Lurch Avenue, that also is an existing town road cross-section. It is quite narrow. It does not contain utilities. The utilities for this property here actually come up off of Freedick Road in this location. So our utilities will come down Town Hall Road onto Lurch, and then it will eventually go down Freedick. The existing Lurch Avenue is 20 feet wide face-to-face with no curb and gutter, no sidewalk. What we're proposing is to construct it to an average of 42 feet wide face-to-face. It flares out as you approach Highway 93. The design of this intersection and the lane configuration is consistent with the recommendations from the Traffic to Impact Analysis. It will be six inches of asphalt pavement, sidewalk on both sides, curb and gutter. It should be noted that we have been approached by property owners at this location, and they have talked with the property owners that just dedicated the right-ofway for this portion of Lurch Road. They will likely be requesting a street vacation from this property line here into this property. Half of the right-ofway was dedicated in the past to this point for road. The other half came with the development here. Topographically, this cul-de-sac will not provide access to the remaining portion here. It's a lot higher in elevation. So they're requesting a street vacation, and this would be a driveway then at their expense to construct rather than a city street. Since I do not have the street vacation in front of me to present to council, our assessments are going forward with the design as proposed, and if that street vacation is accepted by council in the future, then the street assessments would be removed for the area that is vacated on here. Likely that would be January, I would anticipate. The last stretch of roadway is Freedick Road, and it starts at Lurch Boulevard, or Lurch Avenue, rather, and extends south to a point where it ties in with an existing cross-section on Freedick Road that already has curb and gutter on the east side. So this stretch here does not have curb and gutter. It's a rural cross-section, 22 feet wide. We're proposing to construct it 36 feet wide with curb and gutter on both sides and a sidewalk along the east side. There is a recreational trail that lies between the road and Highway 93 that comes up, crosses Lurch, and continues north into Eau Claire. Access to this recreational trail from this side of the interstate will be, or the side of Freedick Road, will be at a crossing on each side of Lurch to help pedestrians from the gym and in these other businesses safely access that trail. Currently, they come down and walk in the existing Lurch Boulevard. Again, utilities will be extended, and water main will be of a size to provide transmission of water in the future if development continues south of Eau Claire. The projects will be hopefully advertised for bids in December, and hopefully award in January and construction in the spring when conditions dictate. The money for these projects were set aside in the 2017 CIP. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Von Hayden?
Seeing that Old Town Hall Road is being moved for a couple reasons along with the development, is there any funding from the development for that relocation of Old Town Hall Road, or is that 100% safe?
We are fully assessing all of the adjacent property owners, so that recoups for the street construction and the utility construction, approximately 50% of the cost of the project.
Okay, so there's no development agreement here because of the movement of that road, but they're responsible paying 100% of it?
Correct. This is being treated like a city street that we would be assessing normal property owners. We are appreciative of the opportunity to have this future heavily located or used street away from the intersection where it would have been before, but we're bringing this forward as part of the 2017 CIP outside of a private development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. On Freedick Road there, you're widening it to 36 feet and adding a sidewalk. Does that tie into a sidewalk further on, or why with a pedestrian trail on the other side of it?
It does not tie into sidewalk as you go further south, but to keep users from, you know, crossing haphazardly and walking in the street, because we do see people on the recreational trail, and there also are people that walk on the side road, we didn't want to extend it further south because we're not, that's where the project is stopping. But we did feel it was important to help, you know, either with people coming on the side from, you know, whether it be Power Tech or TB-18, that they could access the trail system, you know, outside of the street itself. So we didn't propose it on the side, obviously, because of the trail.
Okay, thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you again, Mr. Solberg. Are there members of the public here who came to speak on this project tonight? I think I recognize this gentleman first. Sorry, Mr. Gregor.
Hi, my name's Paul Pollers. I am the one looking at vacating that cul-de-sac on Lurch Avenue, and I've talked to Mr. Solberg about it, and I understand we have to do a street vacation to do that, which we haven't done yet. But at this point in time, until we get that together, we, at this point in time, the cul-de-sac will serve no one. It dead-ends in Gold's Gym, and right now, we have a private drive going in there, which we would continue to have just like it is, and it doesn't serve the Fleet Farm property whatsoever. So it's really costly for the city, costly for Gold's Gym, and costly for Fleet Farm, and nobody gets anything out of it. So that's why we're looking at the street vacation. And I guess until we do the form. Anybody have any questions on that, or?
You understood the timeline, Mr. Pollers?
I do.
That it would likely be January before that arrives on our agenda?
That's correct.
So tomorrow, just be prepared for action as presented, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hello, good evening. Jeremy Gregor at 451 Lincoln Avenue here in Eau Claire. Obviously, I've been in front of you on this project in the past, and I'm glad to see it coming together here. As a bicyclist and someone who walks quite a bit in our community, I wanted to give some perspectives on it and ask a few questions associated with the project. One of the things I want to show is the way that this intersection with Lurch and North Town, or Old Town Hall Road is an important bicycle connection, so the Chippewa Valley Bike Map, which I was involved with creating, gives you some perspective on that. So the location is right over here. I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit. All right. So basically, for folks to be able to get to Highway 53 in this area, you can't really go through this cloverleaf interchange of freeway, so a lot of, so everybody on a bike has to go through 93 if they're coming from the City of Eau Claire, and then they have to go on that section of Old Town Hall Road, which would be great to get away from 93, as was mentioned earlier. And blue are the most bike-friendly routes within the city. This will obviously add a lot of traffic, a Fleet Farm of this size. So it's good that we're proposing bike lanes, and I really appreciate that Mr. Solberg was able to fit those into the project. You can see that the crossing of 93, it has kind of a dashed red. That's kind of very much a caution area for bicyclists, and then orange is kind of medium traffic level to use some, you know, that has a certain amount of caution that needs to be used to be able to traverse that area. So this project will probably not really change the coloring on our map because it has, it's adding bike lanes, but because of the pinch point that we're seeing at Lurch Avenue, we're kind of running into some issues, so I wanted to kind of zoom in on that area. So folks on a bike will have to go down the trail here, and then apparently onto either the sidewalk to connect over to bike lanes, or they'll have to go on the street itself because I don't believe that this section of Lurch Avenue is proposing bike lanes. I think there's a zoomed-in version of that somewhere. So I guess this is an area of concern for me, is how we're going to be able to, I guess, if that sidewalk could somehow be widened out to be a trail or something, or we could fit bike lanes into this little section of Lurch Avenue, that would be a change I would love to see as a bicyclist. There was a note about the issue of the sidewalks on, I think it was called Freedick, and I do think that that is very necessary on the east side, just as another thing to mention, because a lot of people at Gold's Gym and Power Techs and at the TV station, a lot of people are walking back and forth, and at that gas station and that pedestrian area is starting to come alive a bit more. So just wanted to show support for that, too, and for the sidewalks throughout the whole project. But my real question is how we could possibly fit in either a trail connection here or bike lanes on this little section of Lurch? So just wanted to put that out there for you. Leave that right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregor. I see no questions. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak about the Lurch Avenue project? Okay. Seeing none, the chair will close that item. That ends our street improvement items for the evening and brings us to our second public hearing, which is a hearing on the 2018 operating budget and library and health department budgets and special agency funding. Mr. Winsens? Always the culmination of a lot of work.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid, members of the City Council. Thanks, Kathy. Before you this evening is the 2018 proposed operating budget. As Council President indicated, this is kind of the culmination of a multi-month process where division and department heads have submitted requests to the city manager for inclusion in the proposed 2018 budget. And now, this evening is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the proposal and for the City Council to receive input. Just a little bit of information by way of background, as council members are aware, in the state of Wisconsin, we have something called levy limits. The state legislature has put a restriction on the ability of cities, municipalities, counties within the state of Wisconsin as far as how much they're able to increase the tax levy annually to fund city operations. That is restricted to what's referred to as net new construction, and net new construction for 2018 was really based upon construction activities in 2016. And the net new construction number that we're working with for 2018 is 1.961%, or $657,000. However, in the most recent budget that was passed by the legislature, they did make a change and now require something that's called a negative adjustment for pre-2005 debt service. That reduces that levy amount by $70,400, which means we're able to increase the tax levy for operations in 2018 by about $587,000. Just to remember that post-2005 debt service is exempt from the levy limits, and the only way that we can exceed the levy limits is through a referendum. So just some of the revenue drivers that went into the 2018 budget. These are significant revenue and expenditure changes that significantly impacted the preparation of this budget. On the revenue side, transportation aids increased by about $360,000. As you may recall, that was a late adjustment that we made to the budget based upon additional transportation funding included in the governor's budget. Fire and rescue fees, we're estimating will increase by about $300,000. As our population continues to age, we have more and more calls for service for EMS-related activities and continue to see additional revenue from those runs. Charges for intergovernmental services are increasing by about $277,000. These are a result from partnerships that we have with the county as well as the school district, where they reimburse us for services that we cooperatively provide. The economy is starting to rebound a little bit. We're starting to see interest rates tick up. I was surprised to find out in the last couple of weeks that interest at the local government investment pool is all the way up to 1%, which, considering three years ago, it was like .15%, is really ticking up now. But that, we're estimating that will produce additional investment earnings of about $177,000. State aids, primarily through the Payment for Municipal Services Program, are increasing by about $90,000. Room tax revenues that come to the City of Eau Claire are increasing, and that transfer for community enhancement, we're estimating will go up by about $61,000. That's our portion of the room tax dollars. And then construction and development fees. As new construction is occurring, we're starting to see an increase in building permit, planning fees, and all of those construction and development fees. On the expenditure side, some of the driving factors in this budget include wages and wage-driven fringe benefits. We have budgeted for a 1% January 1st adjustment and a 1% July 1st adjustment for employees. That totals $628,000. Retiree health insurance, as you all are aware, our workforce is aging, people are retiring, and in the past, we've had approximately the same number of people going off of our retiree health insurance as we had coming on. Well, that trend has now changed, and we have many more going on our retiree health insurance than are coming off. The budget for retiree health insurance is increasing by over half a million dollars in the 2018 budget. Elections, we have additional elections in 2018 because it's a gubernatorial election year. The budget for elections is increasing by about $244,000. This was something we anticipated last year, and you may recall that we planned for it by using that $244,000 for one-time expenditures last year, and now that money can be made available to go back into elections next year. It could be used for one-time expenditures again. Health insurance is increasing by about $180,000. We budgeted a 4% increase in health insurance, which is actually very good compared to many other places, which are still experiencing double-digit increases in health insurance. This budget does include a new position in the Information Technology Department starting July 1st. And then we had some expenditure reductions. Supplies and materials going down by about $28,000. City facility rental by about $43,000. The transfer to transit operating is going down by about $47,000. And then our transfer to economic development is going down by about $120,000 because we transferred the $200,000 that we had been budgeting for property acquisitions. We transferred to the capital budget to acquire the remaining properties within the cannery redevelopment area. Some of the approved service modifications or the changes in the 2018 budget, just want to run through these quickly. We did include funding for an additional telecommunicator within the 911 Center. This is to add additional supervisory capabilities within the center. The total cost of that is $78,500, but because we split that, 70/30 with the county, the cost to the general fund is $23,500. We're planning to update the strategic plan next year, and have included funds to work with a facilitator on that project. $10,000 is included for that activity. We are still entering time cards in a very manual system. That is, we've got an individual who enters time cards into our payroll. That is, we've got an individual who enters time cards into our payroll system. We're proposing to go to electronic entry or employee self-service, and that has a total cost of about $84,000. Now, I should point out that only about $59,000 of that is actually a general fund cost. The other portion of that is being allocated to other funds, as well as the library and health department, since we all use the same payroll system. We're proposing to update our pay plan. The $10,250 is to hire the same consultant to update the pay plan that the city council approved a couple of years ago. We're proposing additional funding for IT staff training. Various position reclassifications are nearly $10,000. These are individuals where they may be performing duties and responsibilities that are above the expectations for the pay position that they're currently in, and their supervisors have recommended that they be reclassified, or it could be part of a reorganization within a particular division or department. And here's that IT position again with the July 1 start date. Continuing on, we've had discussions with the city council about the need to shift funding for economic development from the Economic Development Fund to the general fund, because the Economic Development Fund was seeded with one-time money, primarily from the closure of the Uniroil Plant, and those funds are exhausted at this point in time. So to continue to provide those activities, we need to shift that funding to the general fund. This is the second year of, I guess, what I envision as a three-year plan to do that shift, so I expect that the 2019 budget will be able to complete that transition. Includes funding for equipment for the hazardous materials team. Every five years, we're required to update the transit development plan. That has a total cost of $95,000, of which $19,000 would be the local share. The remainder would be coming from state and federal assistance. And then a couple of equipment items that are small enough not to be included in the capital improvement plan for the city maintenance facility is a floor crane and air conditioning refrigerant recovery system. And then the last slide of approved service modifications include EMS fire equipment. This is primarily funding to provide the supplies for the additional ambulance that is being proposed at Station Number 6. We've got fire operations equipment. We've got parks equipment and building repairs. These are items that have traditionally been budgeted within the CIP, but they're really, in my opinion, not CIP items. It's really for the repair of parks, facilities, and equipment. Could be from vandalism. It could be from just normal wear and tear. And we're shifting that to the operating budget, because in my opinion, that's where it more appropriately belongs. We're doing more background checks as we're recruiting additional employees, so there's funding for that. In addition, a couple of years ago, we did an aerial survey of the deer herd. We're proposing to update that survey, complete a survey again to see if our deer management practices have been having any influence or not and determine where we might need to target those practices in the future. The police department budget includes an additional $25,000 for community service officers to provide parking enforcement within the downtown. Several years ago, we increased the hours that we were restricting parking in the downtown, but we never increased funding for community services officers to enforce that parking. Right now, the budget for the police department provides about 210 hours of community service officers to enforce parking in the downtown. The hours that we have parking restrictions in effect total about 270 hours per week. So there's a gap between the hours that we enforce parking restrictions and the number of hours that we're able to have community service officers on the street enforcing those restrictions. This is half of the amount that was requested by the police department. And lastly, we're including funds to replace a popcorn kettle and chest freezer within the recreation department. So we have many service modifications that were approved. We also have several, and these total approaching a million dollars, that were not approved. We simply were not able to fit them within the 2018 budget. Every year, it's a juggling act, and a matter of prioritizing certain items that get included, certain items that don't get included. These items were not included. We received additional requests to reclassify employees totaling about $32,000 that we were not able to include in this budget. Requests for office furniture totaling $125,000. Additional positions within the IT department totaling nearly $500,000. Additional police overtime hours totaling nearly $120,000. And then operating costs for smartphones totaling about $54,000. In addition, there's one that's not on here that we never received an official service modification, but the police chief, or excuse me, the fire chief had discussed with the city manager and myself before the budget process started, additional funding to staff that ambulance at Station Number 6. And I think that the city manager and I discouraged the submission of that request, and it wasn't submitted. So if you add that to the list here, it's totaling nearly a million dollars in service modifications that were not included in the proposed budget. Couple of issues that have come up since the budget was presented to you, and I expect that you'll be hearing more about them this evening. One of those relates to transit fares. Last fare increase for transit was in 2009. So the proposal in the budget would go into effect in 2018. So it's been nine years since the last increase in transit fares. From 2009 through 2016, so since the last fare increase, actual general fund operating expenditures have increased by an average of 1.46% per year. Actual transit operating expenditures have increased on average by 3.63% per year. The actual general fund subsidy of the transit system have increased by an average of 5.06% per year. And the subsidy, the general fund subsidy of the transit system as a percentage of the general fund expenditures has increased by an average of 3.27% per year. So the point of this is that general fund resources are being diverted from other programs or activities to the transit system, and the expenditures and the subsidy for the transit system have been growing faster than expenditures in the general fund as a whole. We believe that this pattern necessitates a fare increase at this particular time and that it is necessary to proceed with that. Another issue that's arisen in the last week or so has to do with the fire chief's proposal to create a combination station at Station Number 6, which is located on Gulf Road on the south side of the community. I think it's important to understand that approximately 80% of our calls for service right now are EMS-related. And that Station Number 6 currently does respond to EMS calls for service. They do so with an engine. And when that engine is out on a call for EMS service, it's not available to respond to fire structure, structured fire calls. In addition, when that engine is out on a call for EMS service, one of the ambulances from somewhere else in the city also accompanies that engine. So the territory that that ambulance vacates now does not have ambulance service as well. Right now, we only have three ambulances covering the city of Eau Claire. This proposal adds an additional ambulance at Station Number 6 with the current staffing. The way that would work is if the station gets a call for an EMS call, those individuals stationed there would get in the ambulance and go to that call. They would also be paramedics rather than EMTs, which currently staff the station. So they would be able to provide more advanced life support to the patient than can be provided just with an engine arriving on the scene. Now, in all fairness, there may be times that an ambulance stationed at Station Number 6 would respond to EMS calls that the engine does not currently. Those probably would be few and far between, because the engine responds to many EMS calls, but there will be times when that might happen. I think that this proposal by the fire chief is attempting to provide an increased level of service on the south side of the community in terms of EMS response and further divide up the workload for those EMS responses between the other three ambulances within the community. So now, rather than having three ambulances that have to respond to all EMS calls, we have four ambulances responding to those calls and dividing up that workload a little bit more. The taxpayer impact of the proposed budget before you, as you can see, the tax increase for the owner of a $150,000 home with this proposed budget would increase by about $27 per year or about 2%. If you break this proposed budget down into what's driving that property tax increase, about $3 of that $27 increase is going for operations. About $17 is going for debt service, and about $7 is going to pay debt associated with the tax incremental districts. So again, debt service, and this is service on debt that's all been previously approved by the city council, is really the primary driver for the property tax increase. And just as a reminder, we have gone through a fairly lengthy process for the development of this budget. We had a work session with the council back on October 17. That was the only work session we held with the city council, and here we are now on November 13, having the public hearing on the proposed budget. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Winsens. I can't see your lights, but you're on. Okay. Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Winsens, for your presentation and to everybody that helped to get this together. I know it's a grind every year, so I really respect the hard work that's been put into it. Wondering if you or the city manager or maybe the chief could speak a little bit about kind of down-the-road projections to adding additional staff at Station 6. I know that I've been very interested in this issue, and my understanding is that that is an interest down the line. And can you share a little bit more about the timeframe that you're looking at and why you'd be interested in doing that down the line?
Sure, absolutely. That has been a conversation, and the fire chief has indicated to me that what he's proposed in this budget is the first step in a multi-year plan to improve EMS response within the city of Eau Claire. It is his, or I do expect that next year, when we're preparing the 2019 budget, I expect that he will be submitting a service modification, I guess assuming that this budget moves forward, that he would be submitting a service modification to increase funding to provide, I guess, daytime EMS personnel at Station Number 6. We being the city manager and myself will have to evaluate that request along with all the other requests that we receive next year, just like we had to this year and the year before, and determine which of those are recommended for funding. But I do fully expect that the fire chief will be submitting that request.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bean.
Thank you. You mentioned in relation to levy limits, something about a net adjustment that reduces the levy limit allocation. Is that something that we should expect to happen every year, or is that a one-year thing?
The short answer is yes, although there is a little, I think, a one-year exception to that, where it won't cause our levy to go down. But over the next 10 years, that negative adjustment will reduce our levy capacity by over $2 million.
And I see no, oh, councilmember Strobel.
Just one more question on the fire department issue. Currently, the, and this is maybe not a question for you, but maybe a policy question that gets looked at down the road. Currently, we're dispatching fire engines to every EMS call, and that's got to be a tremendous extra cost, and then it also affects these staffing issues as well. I don't know when that policy was put in place or necessarily the reasoning for it, but is that something that would be looked at as well in the future?
I really would need to defer to the fire chief on that question. Councilmember Strobel.
Okay. Thank you.
June.
I was just waiting out on the wings for the questions. In regards to the fire engine, it's actually a common question. The reason that we send, we don't send them on every call, and I'll just correct one thing. It was stated, with Station 6, they respond to about 50% of the calls that occur within 6's district. They go to the Charlie and Delta calls. So we break all of our calls up into Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. Alpha and Bravo being less severe, Charlie and Delta being more severe. So we dispatch an engine company to the Charlie and Delta calls, because they're usually the PNB's, pulseless non-breathing heart attacks, traumatic injuries, and we need extra personnel to assist. I'm sorry if that was the question that you asked.
That'll work for now. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Bell. I see no further questions. And without further council questions, we will turn to the public input portion. You may approach the podium, and we just take turns, and it works out fine. And remember to begin by stating your name and address.
John Prince, resident of Eau Claire for the past 42 years. Came here from Madison. I had been the head of a $2.8 million project to improve emergency medical services across the state of Wisconsin. We had 22 some projects going on. And the project I was very much involved with in Madison was starting in the first paramedic program for the city of Madison Fire Department. And currently, they have 13 fire stations down there, 82 firefighters on duty, 24-hour shifts. When we started the program in 1972, late 1972, the population of Madison was 170,000 people. And we set up paramedic units at five different stations. So after a year and a half of operation, I called in, I had the federal money, $2.8 million, to bring in a bunch of expert physicians from across the country. Dr. Farrington started the paramedic program in the city of Chicago in the early 1960s. And they looked at all the runs that were performed by the paramedics, trained at the University of Wisconsin Hospitals, Dr. Marv Bernbaum and his staff. And they found that with these sophisticated procedures, putting in laryngoscopes and innovating patients, you need a lot of experience to be effective at doing it. And the recommendation was, although there were five units, each unit serving 34,000 in population, they weren't getting enough real experience in doing paramedic procedures. So the recommendation among their findings was to reduce, to cut out one of the five stations. It happened to be on the east side of Madison. Well, of course, the politicians and the union fought against that, and it never happened. So right now, Madison's got a population of 252,000 people, and they have eight paramedic units. And that's an average of 31,500 people per paramedic unit. So they're getting, we've got, right now, we've got three units, and what do we average? are we averaging? If you count the county of Eau Claire, you're talking 102,000 people. With four units, that'd only be 25,000 per. At 65,000 for the city of Eau Claire, four units, you're down to 16,000 people per paramedic unit, and they're not going to get the exercise they need to perform competently, in my opinion. I'm old enough that when I came to town, I sat down with Gray Walks and Chief Meisel to help him start the first firefighter EMS program. And Chief Meisel didn't want to charge anything. He says, "That's, it should be no different." And the Fire said, "Well, we talked him into charging $50 a run." And then the second year, he raised it to $100 a run. And it's been a successful service. But when you're talking about paramedic procedures, you need a lot of experience, and I'm just afraid, I'm not going to get into the issue of the cost of it. I'm just concerned that they're going to have the experience that's necessary. Chief Bell, I'd like to make a short comment about sending engine companies with the ambulances. They sent an engine company with almost every nursing home call. It happened with my first wife in December of 2010. Six firefighters crowded into the nursing home room. And in this past summer, my current wife, suffering from defects of chemotherapy, collapsed in the hallway to our bathroom at 3363 South Gate Court. I called 911. I told the dispatcher, "I don't need an engine company. I need an ambulance." My wife weighs 120 pounds. Well, guess what? I got an engine company, and I had seven firefighters crowded into that narrow hallway of our condominium. It's totally unnecessary. It's just driving up the numbers inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. I see no questions for you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Carl Johnson, president of Eau Claire Firefighters Local 47. Come before you tonight with a matter of public concern with the imminent changes to the operation of the Fire Department that we feel the citizens of the city of Eau Claire, excuse me, that we feel place the citizens of Eau Claire in greater jeopardy. As most of you are aware, city administrators are making changes to how fire and ambulance services will be provided to the taxpayers of the city. These changes involve what is called a combination company in the city's south side that serve major businesses such as Walmart, Oakwood Mall, Menards, as well as many high-value residential districts and assisted living facilities such as Oakwood Hills and Dove South. As of three days ago, Station Six was staffed 24 hours by three firefighters and a front-line 75-foot ladder truck with a reserve engine. These firefighters would respond to both fires and EMS calls within its response area with that truck. Today, that ladder truck has been moved to Station Five, and the engine that serves Station Five's response area has been moved to Station Six. Beginning in January, that, the reserve engine will be moved out of Station Six and replaced with an ambulance. It is the intent of the Fire Chief to increase EMS services by bringing on an additional ambulance. We could not agree more that another full-time ambulance is needed to provide the service, but unfortunately, the Fire Chief's budget has prevented him from being able to increase that service without making a drastic cut somewhere within his department. As we know now, this cut will be in the fire protection on Eau Claire's south side. To give you an idea of how these changes will impact the citizens, now when an EMS call comes in, those firefighters will respond in an ambulance to wherever it is needed while the fire truck remains unstaffed. This leaves the city short of fire truck and the south side unprotected for an extended period of time. I cannot express more to the citizens that this means that this ambulance could be in the county while the fire engine that they pay for will not be responding to fire or EMS calls within the city. Last year, the Eau Claire Fire Department responded to a record number of calls, 8,734. That is up almost 3,000 incidents from 10 years ago when the city took over regional EMS. Council was advised at that time that eventually there would be a need to increase staffing to keep up with the demands of a growing city and an aging population. We have continued to provide that service with no additional staffing. The Chief has recognized that there is a need for an additional ambulance to keep up those demands, both for the protection of the citizens and his firefighters. Again, his budget has prevented him from making the permanent changes needed to increase services that do not sacrifice the levels of protection, the citizens of the city, excuse me, to the citizens of the city. To put staffing into historical perspective, last year, there was a staffing change to the Eau Claire Fire Department was in 2003. That year, the city of Eau Claire was faced with a budget deficit. As a result, four Fire Department personnel positions were cut. That means the last change the Eau Claire Fire Department had in staffing was actually a reduction to the number of personnel we currently have today. I stand before you tonight advocating for public safety, not only for the south side of Eau Claire, but for the city as a whole. As I have explained, dangerous service changes will be occurring at Station Six beginning in January of 2018. The implementation of the combination company, the fire engine, which the citizens are paying for, will sit in the fire station unstaffed while the ambulance is responding to emergency calls, both in and out of the city. Citizens of Eau Claire deserve to know that their fire service is being reduced at the expense of EMS services, with some of those services occurring outside the city. We agree with the Chief that EMS service needs to be enhanced, and we acknowledge that the given budget he is currently operating under has put him in a difficult position to do with the best he can with what he has. That is why we're asking for these operational changes to be halted to prevent any further service reduction until budget improvements can be made in the near future that will give the Chief the resources he needs to provide both fire and EMS services that the citizens of Eau Claire deserve. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Johnson. I see none tonight. Thank you, sir.
My name is Tom Wallen, vice president of Eau Claire Firefighters Association. I've been with Eau Claire Fire and Rescue for almost 12 years now, and in that time, I've seen substantial increases in our productivity. The Fire Department's call volume has increased by nearly 3,000 runs a year. Our net ambulance revenue alone has nearly tripled. One thing that hasn't changed is our staffing levels. President Kincaid, during your last city, excuse me, State of the City address, you proclaimed, "The future is ours to see." You highlighted projected population growth, growth in diversity, and an aging population for the city in years to come. Specifically, you stated there will be a 72% increase in the 60- to 84-year demographic from 2010 to 2025. Those trends all point to a long sustaining, excuse me, they point to a long sustaining rise in call volume for the Fire Department. An aging baby boomer population, reduced state and federal funds for Medicaid, and ever-increasing healthcare costs all directly impact emergency services by driving up run numbers. This problem is not going away. We're beginning to be spread thin. As our call volume continues to climb, our coverage will get thinner until there's an increase in staffing or a reduction in services. This plan will negatively, excuse me, I believe the combination company at Station Six is a step in the direction of a reduction in services. This plan will negatively affect response times for the citizens in Station Six's district and likely have a ripple effect on neighboring response districts. I encourage you to table the combination station plan and strongly consider funding additional staffing for the Fire Department. If not, this budget's cyclical, one in the near future. The future is ours to see. It's calling for an increased demand in emergency services. I hope in the future, you'll allow us to meet those demands at the same level of services we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Hello, Jeremy Gregor at 451 Lincoln Avenue. Guess I'll go to this microphone. It's a little better. I want to pass out to you an op-ed that I wrote for the Lear Telegram regarding the changes to our bus fares and the fee schedule. So I think it'd be easiest to give it to you. And I did send this over email, too, so it's no hurry in terms of getting it to the numbers today, but I do appreciate all the work that went into this budget. Obviously, it's been, it takes up like half your year every year. I do tend to like to find ways to get involved earlier before this hearing and night before it's approved, so one of the things I would love for this council in the cities to look at is ways for, to involve the public more in an earlier time in the budget process. It was mentioned earlier that we are late in the process, and I would say this is the final hour. The public transit discussion is really what I want to focus on. There has been, you know, we haven't raised our bus fare since 2009, and that's really been the main reason I've heard from the city as to why we should do it again. But what's often not mentioned is that it was raised in 2008, the year before that, and the increase was as much as 50% at that time, and what is being proposed right now is as much as 25%. And actually, the 25% figure is on children in Eau Claire who ride our bus system. That's how much the fares would go up for the cash fare for children. So I think it should give us pause, you know, to look at who rides the bus, and I hope that as many of you as possible rode the bus in the last few months, as you saw this coming to you, so that you can talk it over with folks and see what they're feeling about it. Transit Commission, which represents those riders in many ways, and also represents different interest groups, including the city of Altoona and students at UW Eau Claire, they voted this down. They did not recommend an increase in our bus fares. And I serve on the Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance Board, and we are against this increase. I serve on the Wisconsin Transit Riders Alliance Board, a statewide group, and we are against this increase as well. There is an amendment in front of you, I understand, as part of your packet. I think it'll probably be modified a bit because there was an effort made to find money. Obviously, it's very hard to do that in the final weeks here because there's not much wiggle room, and we've just heard about some important needs in our community as well among the firefighters and EMS. But there is, there is room, I feel, in the parking enforcement increase that was proposed and mentioned by Mr. Winsens, the finance director. And there is some wiggle room, I believe, in the Parks and Recreation Building Maintenance Fund that is being transferred in responsibility from the CIP. So that, I believe, will be a way for us to fill in that gap of $37,000, which is really all we have to find. Out of a $72 million budget, I think we can make this, we can find a way to do it and come together to support people who ride the bus in this community. I feel that transit riders are, you know, they're doing the environmentally friendly thing by riding the bus. We just, as a city, supported following the goals of the Paris Climate Accord, which I know was not a small, you know, discussion point here. And I was saddened by the next day showing up at Transit Commission after this council approved that. The next day, I went to Transit Commission, and the transit manager proposed a bus fare increase, which automatically results in fewer people riding statistically across the country. It's been studied, and there's a chart that shows that. We would lose about 31,000 rides. Our ridership would go down that much, and already, our ridership is going down. In 2008, we had about 1.1 million rides, and now we're getting close to 900,000. So really, I think the biggest threat to us is lower ridership, and this would only lower our ridership. I think the percentage of our expenses covered by transit riders is about 22%, which is about the state average, well within where we should be. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Sure. Questions for Mr. Gregor? I see none tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Smith, and I'm at 222 Water Street. I am a student at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, and I'm also a member of the Student Senate. I'm a senator. And I am pleased to share that tonight, the UW Eau Claire Student Senate passed Resolution 60R11, 61R11, in opposition to an increased transit fare. The Student Senate recommends that the transit fares remain the same, as increased fees do not encourage public transit use. Furthermore, the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire Student Senate will reconsider the transit agreement with the city of Eau Claire if fares are increased. So we implore that the body does not increase transit fares. Furthermore, we will transmit a copy of this resolution to this body tomorrow. Thank you. Good night. Oh, wait, any questions? Is that it?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
My name is Nick Weber, currently at 125 Broadway Street. I want to thank President Kincaid and the city council for allowing me to speak on this important issue. I have the pleasure of serving as student body vice president at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, as well as on the city of Eau Claire Transit Commission. But today, I come to you as a citizen, a citizen that is proud of what this community has done to better the lives of our neighbors, even when it isn't the easiest thing to do. The fact of the matter is, local governments, such as ours, have to make difficult budgetary decisions this year, in the past, and in the future. But with every decision that we make, a choice between the easy option and the best option is presented. The proposal in the budget to increase fares is indeed an easy way to reduce the size of the transit share in the general fund while continuing to provide service. And it would be easy for you to say that due to a tight budget, it was the only option that we had. But it's important to ask how this easy decision will affect the people that I represent. Will it be easy to argue that a decrease in ridership due to increased fares is good for our transit system? Will it be easy to say that you did all you could to promote sustainable practices in your city? And would it be easy to tell the transit-dependent rider with no more to give that there was nothing you could do when you know there was? An amendment calling for the reallocation of general funds in any way to help those who need it most in the city of Eau Claire is something that the students support, and those of us who are on the Transit Commission felt as though was the highest priority in our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I see no questions for you.
Good evening. My name is Paula Bonnen. I live at 1810 Whipple Street here in Eau Claire. I don't normally get up in front of a lot of really wonderful people, but tonight I have to because every one of those gentlemen that's sitting back there at Station Six, they saved my mother's life. And if it wasn't for them, she wouldn't have made it that day. And I understand that our city's getting bigger, and we're getting more diverse, and we need more things, you know, like the Confluence Project and Lights on a Bridge and things like that. I know everybody wants that, but personally, I would feel so much safer knowing that each and every one of those guys is getting paid what they deserve and that they have everybody that they need on staff to protect each and every one of us. That's my opinion. If it was me and there was a fire, I would pray to God that they would come and save me. I really would. And I think, you know, with everything that's going on right now with the budget and things like that, I would ask and implore you that you table the motion for Station Six until, hopefully, they can get more funding so they can get more people working there. so they can get more people working there so we can have more protection for each and every one of us. Because I know if there's a fire, there was a fire up on Belcom, there was a fire downtown at the same time. And I don't think that our city really has enough firefighters and EMTs to really take care of it if we've only got three running at one time. And that's, to me, it's important that if my house is on fire, I hope they come and get me and that they'll save my life. Or if I'm in an accident, I hope an EMT ambulance will come and get me and help me. And so I implore you to please table that until you can hopefully get more money for the fire and EMS here in Eau Claire. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnan. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Libby Stupak. I'm at 2228 Winsong Court here in Eau Claire. You'll have to excuse me. I have a cold, so. First of all, I'd like to commend the council for passing the resolution committing to the goals of the Paris Climate Accord. One way to curb greenhouse gas, which contributes to climate change, is to take all possible measures to support mass transit. With Eau Claire's growing population, we should be looking at expanding and improving our transit rather than increasing the fare and thereby attracting more riders. I personally oppose the bus fare increase, which is proposed in the current budget. As other, others have said, studies have shown that ridership actually goes down when fares are increased. I feel that we should do everything we can to entice the population to use transit. I am a bus rider and I know that there are many low-income and elderly individuals that rely on the bus. And there are also many individuals where this is their only form of transportation. This increase would be a serious hardship for many. We should actually be seriously looking at ways to improve and expand our transit system. And I think we should all continue to share in the cost for the good of the community as a whole rather than just passing the cost on to the riders. Because at some point, we all need, we will all need mass transit. I do have a question about the budget. If you could tell me if the additional $25,000 proposed for parking enforcement would actually bring in more than that amount in revenue, that expenditure?
I'm not sure that Mr. Wincens can offer you an answer tonight, but he certainly can get you an answer by, hopefully, tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Carrie Heft, 732 Chauncey Street. I am not in favor of the increase in the bus fare. My work takes me into the homes of families and individuals living, many of whom are living in severe poverty situations. And the bus is their only, only means of getting around the town in, in many cases. This, this, what may seem like a small increase is not a small increase to, to some of these individuals. And October 1st, food share was cut for most recipients. So much of my work right now has been helping families to, to deal with the repercussions of, of what to do with their, um, not being able to meet their basic needs. And when there's an extra expense, my experience has been when there's an extra expense that, that comes about, it oftentimes will come out of the, the food budget, which has now been significantly decreased for many families. So, um, this increase would hurt very, our very vulnerable, um, population, so.
Any questions? I see none.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Heft. Anyone else?
Eleanor Wolfe. I live at 1810 Birch Street. And I too feel that cutting the, uh, actually raising, raising the budget for the fares, bus fares, is, is a bad idea. While our national government is cutting, and our state government is cutting all kinds of programs for the poor, uh, we have a duty here in Eau Claire. And we have a sizable, um, poor population in the city. And this is a small thing that we can do is, is support, uh, support our low-income people by providing a, a good bus service at a reasonable price. And I urge you not to, um, not to raise the fares. And the parking, taking, taking that money, 25,000, and putting it, putting it into more parking, uh, parking, uh, policemen to, to find, to find people who are parking maybe a little over two feet from the curb or something like that. It's not life or death. But the, the bus fares are, are, are very, very important. And, and it's an important service that, that we should be willing to, um, provide to our lower-income people and our students and our elderly. So I urge you to not increase the bus fares this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfe. Yep. I've seen you popping your head in the door. Several speakers.
I was getting beat.
It's your turn.
Tony Biassi, a member of Eau Claire Firefighters 487 and also a resident of District 2 and Station 6's area. I come here to offer my support for the Fire Chief and the Firefighters Union. And what's nice to hear is that it's not disputed that a fourth ambulance is needed. It's more the method in which we're going to fund it and how we're going to, uh, try to put that ambulance on the road as best we can. I'm here to offer just some facts about why it's important to have that fire engine in service and why it's important to have six fire engines in service as much as we can. It's a little bit technical, but they're facts, so it's, uh, they're not disputed. I'm going to talk a little bit about time to flashover. And it's a firefighter term on how long it takes for a room in a residential structure fire to go from a growing fire to unsurvivable. It's not survivable for a, a regular citizen in their home and it wouldn't be survivable for a firefighter in their turnout gear with their respiratory protection. So time to flashover is something that in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s was about 30 minutes. Fires have changed since then. We're operating in a different environment. It's now four minutes. There's a NIST study out there, National Institute of Standards and Technology. You can do, you can view the videos on YouTube if you, if you do that. And it's a comparison. It's professionally done in a lab where they take two side-by-side rooms, arranged just like they are in our, in our living rooms, couch, recliner, but they're made of different materials. Some are legacy materials, cottons, natural fibers. Some are, in the, in the modern room, it's composites and synthetics and plastics, much like how our homes are arranged now. So instead of 30 minutes, now we're talking about a four-minute period of time where that room is no longer survivable. That is why it's so important to keep that six-station platform. We talked about it a couple of years ago. Council decided that five or six, we went with a six-station platform for, for a lot of reasons, that being one of them. That's twofold. That's citizen safety and, and I want to talk a little bit about firefighter safety also. We, we have a certain obligation to our firefighters to keep them as safe as we can while they protect the community. I attended a course last weekend and Dr. Rich Gassaway gave a presentation. He did his dissertation on line-of-duty deaths in residential dwellings. So residential structure fires, he identified two causes of firefighter fatalities as, as the top two. Flashover being one of them. The second one being structural collapse. And I bring this up because when we look around District 2, when we look around Station 6's area, we look at the type of building construction that's in that area. We take a look at the type of home that I live in, the type of home of my neighborhood and the many neighborhoods throughout. There's lightweight wood-framed truss. I know it's getting technical, but it's a system of wood put together that where one is attacked by fire and fails, we have catastrophic collapse. That's what traps firefighters. That's what kills firefighters. When we look around that area, it's heavy in that light wood-framed truss. And, uh, it's, it's, if we can keep 6's engine in service, and it's all for the better. And I don't know if everybody knows this. It was, it was passed this year on a state level. They took away, how do I put this? A new law passed that doesn't allow for the mandate of sprinklers in any apartment buildings greater or less than 16 units. It didn't come out very smooth, but, so 16-unit apartment buildings and smaller aren't required to have sprinkler systems anymore. A lot of the apartment buildings that we're seeing built now are being built out of light wood-framed trusses. So I, I come here, it's a safety issue on, on my behalf, a safety issue on behalf of my family as well and a safety issue on behalf of the firefighters that I work with. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Questions for Officer Biassi?
Thank you.
I see none. Thank you. And anyone else? Comments on the budget?
Hi. Jody Thompson, 707 Sixth Avenue. I have a written statement from my, my daughter who also lives at the same address. She's urging that the cuts not be made to the police department. Do I hand that to her? She couldn't come tonight, so. I had come tonight thinking that I was going to ask you all to pass the budget as it is, not understanding the issue with the firefighters. And now that I've heard a few of the remarks, I think, well, that's certainly more complex than I had realized. And I don't have an opinion on that other than to say, sort of, in rebuttal to the gentleman from Madison, I also came here from Madison and I would have actually lived there when he was, back in the 70s, when he was instituting his procedures. I would caution against comparing us ever. I know this happens a lot to Madison. Just don't do it. The differences in communities are so enormous. Listen to your own guys. Listen to our own situation. Do not compare ourselves to Madison. If there's some reason they're sending the fire trucks, you know, that's a local thing. Whatever they do in Madison, whole different thing. Beyond that, my, my big concern is the transit situation. And I actually do not know what to say because I feel that there is a lot of cherry-picked information, a lot of misinformation, twisting of information that's going around out there. And I guess I don't really feel, um, I don't know if people aren't watching the meetings. I'm going to assume that they're not because Mr. Wincens went over the facts again tonight. He went over it in the available online work session video that everyone can watch. And they persistently ignore various facts. It's difficult to address completely ignoring certain aspects of a dilemma. I guess I'll try to, um, okay. So this body voted some time ago to change the parking regulations so that it went from 210 hours to get it done to 270. You guys decided that, so law enforcement can't just not do it. So if you don't get the CSO, which is much less pay than a full-time police officer and much less training, if you don't get that position, the cops have to do it. Then they have to prioritize every call that comes in. And if they happen to be tied up someplace, they might not get there. So you have a guy who's overtrained for parking problems having to deal with parking problems if you don't fund the CSO position. Everybody's ignoring that and saying the cops just want to give more tickets. That's not true. This body decided to change the parking regulations. You can't just unfund that. So to take it from police and then say, um, transit impacts our most vulnerable population, what do you think police does? Most police calls are not rich people trying to keep down poor people. They are, you know, disadvantaged, undisadvantaged crime situations where somebody is beating on some other guy, a domestic, an overdose. Those are our most vulnerable populations and our police in Eau Claire function as like a first-contact social worker. And I have seen this over and over, living in Randall Park. Our cops aren't just brutalists who go around, you know, trying to dominate. They're actually the first contact for a really challenged person. Whether the challenged person wants that contact or not, a lot of times it's in their own best interest. So to say, well, we'll just take this money from police because, you know, what? That's easy. That's politically easy because police are unpopular now on social media? That's a distortion of the facts. It's going to impact our most vulnerable people way more than taking a quarter out of their pockets. Now, I agree, it's sad that people who need that quarter are going to be asked to give it up. Taking it from police is like, you know, oh, we're going to slap this guy across the face. Well, the solution is we'll go slap him across the other side of the face. You're still hurting people. Anyways, um, I'm out of time, or out of time. Okay. Bad choice. Don't take it from police. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anyone else? Comments on the budget? Seeing none, then, the chair will close. Let's make sure I'm in the right place. We are just closing item two on our agenda. We have several public discussions ahead of us regarding the budget. We have closed a public hearing on the operating budget. And thank you all for your comments. We appreciate them. While the room is clearing a bit, the chair will announce item three, the first of our public discussions, which is a discussion on amendments to the city's schedule of fees and licenses, which will take effect on January 1st of 2018. Mr. Wincens?
Thank you, Council President. Very much related to the budget we just discussed and received input on, our proposed adjustments to the 2018 fee and license schedule. So within the fee and license schedule for 2018, there are several adjustments being So within the fee and license schedule for 2018, there are several adjustments being proposed. Within the category of cemetery fees, there are several $10 changes being proposed in that schedule. There are no changes being proposed for business licenses, restaurant fees, refuse fees, alarms and fireworks. Since the budget work session, there have been some additional fee changes proposed to the parking fees. There were increases in the, proposed are increases in the hourly rates so that the per hour fees in the parking ramps match the per hour fees that we have in several of our contracts. We didn't want the per hour fee to charge a non-contract parker to be less than the per hour fees that are charged under the, under our parking contracts. Some of those contracts include automatic increases and we just needed to reconcile those two. Within the category of street openings, plumbing fees, building permits, electrical permits, HVAC permits, tank permits, fire prevention fees, plats and plans, satellite dishes, zoning fees, within all of those categories, there are no proposed fee changes. Within the category of stormwater fees, there's a slight increase being proposed to our stormwater fees per ERU to produce sufficient revenue in order to be able to cover the operating budget for that, for that category. And then lastly, within the ambulance fee category, there are various increases being proposed within that category. In the category of miscellaneous department fees, there's a slight increase in the daily and annual dog park fee. There are various proposed increases in the fire apparatus and supply category, no changes to special event fees. And as we previously discussed in the last agenda item, there are various fare increases associated with the transit system being proposed. And no changes to either HODs or Fairfax municipal pools, the fees charged at those facilities. And then lastly, within the fee and license schedule are also various health department fees, but as we've discussed in the past, these are reviewed and approved by the Board of Health and are really just provided for the information to the city council and you don't have any authority to change or alter those recommendations. With that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Mitchell.
My question is, since we're doing licenses and fees and fares on November 28th, how is it that we're taking up transit fares tomorrow?
Well, we're really not taking up transit fares specifically tomorrow, although the revenue from the fare increase is built into the operating budget. Normally, the changes to the fee and license schedule as well as the adoption of the budget would occur on the same evening. However, we inadvertently did not get the first reading for the fee and license schedule on the agenda two weeks ago. So therefore, we, since it is an amendment to the fee and license schedule, requires a first reading and a second and then action, the first reading is occurring tomorrow. And we had indicated to various members of the public that there would be a public discussion on the fee and license schedule at the meeting tonight. So we wanted to keep that public discussion associated with the fee and license schedule, but as you indicated, actually, action or approval of the fee and license schedule will not occur until the meeting two weeks from tonight when council is adopting, adopting the levy. But any increases or changes in that fee and license schedule have been incorporated into the budget. So despite the fact that they're two weeks apart, you know, if members of the city council don't want to increase the fees that are included in this fee and license schedule, it would be appropriate to, you know, indicate that tomorrow during the budget discussion so that any proposed decrease in fee revenue can be taken into account. The only one that I'm really aware of where we built a budget, assuming that fee increase, was in the transit budget.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Winzans. For, from a process perspective, is it within council's purview to suspend the rules tomorrow and take up the fare and fee increases?
I believe it would be in your purview to do that. Historically, council has done that with the, I think with the pay plan ordinance oftentimes. So you could suspend the rules and take action.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up? I'm not sure if the city had a chance to look into this, but I'm curious, how often has a city put together a recommended budget after a previous commission has maybe not recommended a fare increase?
Well, the actual, the actual timing of the preparation of the budget occurred before the Transit Commission did not recommend the fare increase. So, you know, in terms of that timing, it wasn't, that budget process, the budget preparation was already basically completed at the point in time that the Transit Commission didn't recommend it. That being said, I've had some discussions with the city manager about changing the process so that we don't get to the point we're at right now with a budget that assumes changes in the fee and license schedule that haven't been approved by the city council. And what I would like to do next year and in future years is have the city council approve the fee, any changes to the fee and license schedule at your second meeting in August so that then if there are fees that are not approved, or basically, so the city manager then knows which fees are approved when he's putting together his proposed budget, which generally occurs in the month of, in the month of September for distribution and in October. So I want to change the process to get that moved up a little bit sooner so we, so we know the fee and license schedule is set so we don't get to this point where, you know, we've assumed a fee increase and now to not do that fee increase means we need to make budget adjustments at the last minute.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Winzans, on those sheets that you had up, you said that there were some changes in the dog licenses.
Yes, sir. Not licenses, dog park fees.
Oh, dog park fees, I'm sorry, thank you.
The other questions regarding fees. If the chair might allow herself a question also regarding Councilmember Emanuel's question about that the Transit Commission ultimately didn't approve, I think it was by a five to four vote or, or doesn't matter, I guess, but the, it does bring into question the larger issue that we've grappled with for the last two years as far as what is the relationship of a commission to the elected body. And it seems like maybe when you put together your revised schedule for next year that we could also coordinate that with the commission so we can, we can hear what they've had to say and we ultimately have to make the decision as the electors, but maybe we can pay attention to that timing also and kind of get that all.
Definitely.
I think they meet monthly. Just another thing to remember for a whole year. Okay. I see no further questions on fee and license schedule, but are there members of the public here who wish to speak to the fee and license schedule? Seeing none, the chair will close that item and move us along to a public discussion on an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the city code entitled Sewer Service Charges to Increase the Sewer User Charges as Proposed in Our 2018 Operating Budget. Mr. Winzans.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. We are proposing increases in the sewer service charges for 2018. The, the city operates a sewer utility that generates revenue through user fees to pay for the operation and maintenance and debt service of the sanitary sewer system and we're required by statute to maintain a user charge system that allocates cost in proportion to use. The new rate will cost the average homeowner using 12 cubic feet an additional $2 per quarter and still keeps our sewer rates very much at the lower end of our peer communities. As you can see, the total quarterly charge would be $47.68 with the proposed increases, which is in the bottom third of our peer communities. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you.
Why is there such a difference between Eau Claire and the other communities other than Kenosha when, in the flat rate? Do you know?
Well, I don't know, I don't know for sure. You know, that, that flat rate is going to have to do with the value of their equipment in place and how much of that they're, they're recovering from, from all users as opposed to in that variable usage fee. There are some communities that have, have increased their, their flat fee because otherwise their, their user fee or the variable portion of that fee gets, gets too high. All utilities have to recover a certain amount of money in order to, you know, in order to break, break even. Sometimes it's how you, how you end up, end up dividing that, dividing that up. But there certainly is a, is a dramatic difference between the, between the flat fees and the, and the user charge. I'll tell you that snowbirds, folks who are, spend a portion of the year outside of the city that they live in or outside of the state, state of Wisconsin, don't like high flat fees because you pay those regardless of how much you use. So when they're in Florida or wherever, they're still paying that flat fee as opposed to the system, I guess, we have here, which more evenly distributes it between the flat fee and the, and the user, user fee, then their, their charges go down when they're not, when they're not in the city and not using, using any water or discharging that to the sewer system.
Councilmember Stro.
Thank you. Mr. Winzans, what, what, there's a set formula you use to determine what this increase should be and the reason I'm asking that is it seems that we just did the upgrade to the sewage treatment plant and with the increase in technologies, we've been able to reduce staffing there by at least four people, which to me seems like a fair amount of reduction in expenses. So where does the increase come from here?
Well, in, in order to accomplish that, those wonderful upgrades that we did at the treatment plant, we incurred a significant amount of debt and debt service associated with that. So much of the savings, in fact, I would argue pretty much all of the savings that were offset or that were created by those technological advances and reduced staffing levels are offset, at least in the short term, by the debt service associated with investing in that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vannen.
Just a curiosity question, have we ever done an analysis on the snowbirds to see if we should look at dropping our CCF charge and raising the quarterly flat fees so that we don't impact a lot of the seniors that are staying here year round?
To the best of my knowledge, no. We haven't done that type of analysis.
Would that make some sense to do something like that?
We could certainly, we could certainly take a look at that if that was the desire of council.
Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to render an opinion about the sewer service The chair will close that item. Item five on our agenda is a public discussion on an ordinance amending the pay plan and practices.
Good evening. Before you is an ordinance that has two parts to it. It amends, makes certain amendments to the nonrepresented pay plan. The first portion of the, of the, of the ordinance would authorize the 1% across the board increase that would go to all nonrepresented employees on January 1st of 18 and then July 1st of 18 as included in the proposed budget. And then the second section of the ordinance would make certain changes to certain positions on the pay plan. There are four positions that in the last, in this, this year have been, have had changes made to them. The first is the Account Systems Analyst. It's a position in the Finance Department. That position has the same responsibilities as a Fiscal Associate 2 and they are in the same pay grade, so it's become an obsolete position, so it's proposed to delete that position. Within the Police Department, there's a Records Technician Lead position that has been reorganized into a Records Supervisor position to provide greater supervision and evaluation of eight law enforcement support assistants. The position of Project Manager is proposed to be added to the pay plan. This is a position that was moved, a Community Services Supervisor position that was moved from the Community Services Department to the Engineering Department and that new title is Project Manager. And then a new position, a reorganization of, in the City Attorney's Office, creating a Deputy City Attorney position. And those are all the changes that are being brought forward with respect to the nonrepresented pay plan for 2018. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Elton? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you speak a little bit more about maybe the vision with creating the Deputy City Attorney position? And then I will have a question about the allocation of funds for January 1 and July 1. Maybe a technical question, but maybe a little bit more insight on that.
Okay. The Deputy City Attorney position was brought forward. It's, the intent of it is to distinguish between an individual, an attorney who's operating at like an associate level in a private law firm versus a partner level. So somebody who has eight years or more of experience has taken on greater responsibilities within, you know, the City Attorney's Office, more of a project manager managing, you know, projects independently and then providing mentorship to, to city attorneys. So all current staff within the City Attorney's Office would have that ability to move into this particular position once they hit that criteria for meeting the requirements of a Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you. And the second question, if I may, is so when we allocate money effective January 1, but some monies wouldn't be released until July 1 for the pay increases, what happens to that money in the in-between time? Does it sit, you know, if it's not, while it's waiting to be allocated, does it sit somewhere and collect interest or, I guess technically, where, where does that money live until July 1?
Jake, it's certain Mr. Winzans could answer this, but there's not, there's not 2% that's allocated on January 1 and then we're only, you know, paying 1% and it sits. There's enough money for 1% January 1 and then the cost impact of the 1% in July. So it really ends up being, you know, about a percent and a half that is, you know, in the budget and that. the budget, and that allows us to pay 1% on January 1 and another 1% on July 1.
Okay, I think I'll think about that and maybe work on my own, a better follow-up question another time to help me understand that. Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Selton, is the project manager then will work in, the project manager being added on our list here?
It will just work in engineering or across departments?
Across departments, but is allocated to the Engineering Department.
Okay. We, last year, did we also add a, a Business Analyst? I was trying to remember. Who also works across, or supports-
Community Services.
Department, but they have to be in some department for the pay plan?
Correct.
I think project manager, that's really important as far as a broad scope and attention to detail, blah, blah, blah.
And, and I think the, the key responsibility there is, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's managing the buildings and the infrastructure as opposed to managing, you know, people like the custodial staff within Community Services.
Seems like a good one. Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Selton.
Thanks.
I guess you're up for our next item, too, but any one in the public here to talk about the pay plan changes? Seeing none, the chair will close that item and bring our attention to our last item tonight, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending the Benefits and Leaves Plan. Ms. Selton.
And this is, is good news for nonrepresented, or all, all employees throughout the city. The only benefit leave change that we are bringing forward through the ordinance process this year is rolling out dental benefits for all employees of the City of Eau Claire that aren't, don't currently have the ability to, to have dental insurance. There's two groups that are currently have employer-provided dental insurance, and that's the Department Director Group and the Confidential Group, so this would make it available to all employees on a 100% employee contribution towards the benefit. But it's the same program for, that would be available to everybody.
Questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to be corrected if this is out of order. This question is in regards to the state legislature, who took changes to same-sex benefits and kind of who's being impacted by that. And in regards to any amendments, do you foresee that our city would take action to try to amend our city benefit and leaves in accordance to the new laws that were passed? Or can we just leave them be? In, in my opinion, cross my fingers that, that law is changed once again so we can offer those benefits to all employees and their partners?
It's my understanding that the, the, the changes didn't affect how we, how we currently, I mean, it, it didn't affect, I think we had made the change in our personnel policies a couple of years ago when same-sex marriage was recognized so that those individuals already had the benefit of, of, you know, being able to apply for benefits under the city's plan. So I don't think it made any changes.
Mr. Peters.
The, the elimination of the registry doesn't impact us. Several years ago, we acknowledged the, the marriage of a same-sex can, a couple can have the same benefits as all other employees, and that's in our-
Handbook.
In our handbook, it's in our benefits, and so the state law doesn't change the, the status of benefits that are available to same-sex married couples.
May I ask a follow-up? Thank you. So for the state law, the change that took place there was to domestic partnerships, and so since we, the city, didn't have it written as domestic partnership, it was only married partners, then, then indeed our policy doesn't, would still mirror what the state has passed. Okay. Thank you.
Pay attention to what you title things. Okay. See no further questions. Anyone wishing to comment on our Employee Benefits and Leaves package? Seeing none, the chair will close the last item, and that brings to a close our public hearing on the budget and public discussions that followed therein. There being no further business to come before this body on a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer. We are adjourned without objection.
The Eau Claire City Council Meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council Meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt.
Here.
Von Hayden.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, November 14th session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this duty by working with citizens and collaborating with staff, reading the considerable amount of materials in our packets, and we do arrive this afternoon ready to exercise our responsibility. We welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers this afternoon and are grateful, as always, to Community Television for broadcasting and streaming these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We do have important items on our agenda this afternoon, perhaps particularly this afternoon as we are adopting our 2018 budget. But first, let's, before we begin with the consent agenda, the, the chair seeks a motion to amend the agenda. There has been a request by staff to take up item number 15, which is on page 55, right after item 10, which is on page 27. So the motion to amend would just move item 15 to be taken up right after item 10. The items are related to the same topic, the development agreement and some other construction considerations concerning the Fleet Farm property, so.
Let's move.
A motion has been offered by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The motion is amended as adopted. Then we will turn our attention to the consent agenda, items 1 through 9. Councilmembers have questions or wish to take up an item for separate consideration? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to indicate that I would like item 9 removed from the consent agenda, and I can speak to that if that would be allowable.
We'll take up the rest of the consent agenda and then get back to you. Any other questions or requests for separate consideration? On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, the consent agenda is moved, items 1 through 8. Discussion? Items 1 through 8. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
T. Walt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. Councilmember Emanuel, to your motion to remove for separate consideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I am looking to move this to the end of our meeting for today and to have us consider suspending the rules later in our legislative meeting to consider just amending and adopting the fee and license schedule today versus in two weeks. The reasons why are the, if I understand correctly, there was the original intention for us to consider it at the legislative session today, and we have had a public hearing on the matter, and I think it's, we've had adequate public input and discussion and opportunity to learn about it, so I would like an opportunity to learn on this today.
So if the proper thing would be for you to make a motion to suspend the rules and take up item 9, and if that passes, then there would be another step?
Thank you, Madam President. I would make a motion to, what is the right word again?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and take up item number 9, please.
Is there a-
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any further discussion? Can I do this on a simple voice vote? Suspend the rule? Oh, but we do need eight votes. Can I still do? Okay. So we'll do a, a simple motion, so those, but it does require two-thirds or eight votes, so if there's a question, we'll go to a roll call, though. All those in favor of suspending the rules to take up item 9, which is a resolution amending the City of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and license, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Okay, the motion to suspend the rules passes, and then there's one more piece. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to table consider, consideration of the resolution amending the City of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and licenses effective January 1st, 2018, until after Agenda Item Number 23.
Motion to table as indicated has been made and seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden. Discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, our, our agenda then is to our desire, to the way, anyway, the agenda is amended. I do have one proclamation this afternoon and would ask that Mr. French meets me at the podium before we continue our work. Okay, I'll just take a little minute and read this short proclamation. I think it's the first time we've proclaimed Small Business Saturday. So whereas the small, locally-owned businesses of Eau Claire are vital to our community's economic health, and the U.S. Small Business Administration estimates that small business creates 65% of net new local jobs and employ half of all the working population in the United States, and small business owners balance long owner, long hours, family and career responsibilities, serve as community volunteers, and give back to the community through charity and organizations. The City of Eau Claire wishes to recognize small business for its key role, for the key role they play in keeping our economy strong. And advocacy groups and organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, the City Council and the citizens of Eau Claire do proclaim Saturday, November 25th, as Small Business Saturday. Mr. French.
Thank you very much, President Kincaid and the council and, and everyone here for recognizing Saturday, November 25th, as Small Business Saturday. It's, is an important day. As you, as you heard, all the great things that small businesses do for our community, we're taking an extra step this year, and particularly through Downtown Eau Claire, Inc. in engaging even further with our small businesses and promoting them in our four major downtown districts, the West Grand Business District, Water Street, South Barstow, and North Barstow districts. Businesses are engaging with us and, and already promoting the, all the fun things that they'll have in downtown and throughout the city on that Saturday. So we encourage everyone to come out and support your local businesses and the local economy on Saturday, November 25th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your proclamation. Thank you for your office.
Thank you.
We'll then continue with our business agenda, which starts with item number 10, a final resolution approving the project and levying special assessments for street and utility improvements on 12th Street, Old Town Hall Road, Lurch Avenue, and Friedeck Road. Do councilmembers have questions on this item from last evening's public hearing? On a motion then by Councilmember, oh, did you have any further input, Mr. Silver? On a motion then by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 10 is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
T. Walt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye. And that resolution passes. As agreed, then we drop down to item 15, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with 93 Lurch LLC for stormwater facilities on Old Town Hall Road. Mr. Silver.
Thank you for allowing me to move this up on the agenda. Just made sense to describe it in association with the assessments passed. What this development agreement does is, is part of the development, there is a stormwater retention pond that is located in this location north of Lurch Avenue, puts a requirement on the contractor to fully construct and restore that pond, and then establishes a financial guarantee due to the city until the city fully accepts the stormwater pond. So this is associated with the development, but it would not be at a city cost, it would be constructed by the developer.
Questions for Mr. Silver? Seeing none, thank you. And on a motion by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 15 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
T. Walt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye. You okay? And that resolution passes. Then we move back up to item 11, a resolution ordering sidewalk to be repaired on 12th Street from 100 feet, feet south of Hawthorne to Locust Street. Is that you, Mr. Silver?
What this resolution does in association with the previous projects that were approved, since there is a sidewalk currently existing, there are different rules that govern the repair of sidewalk that comply with state statutes, so this just authorizes the sidewalk to be repaired in that stretch as opposed to the other streets do not have sidewalks, so the previous approval of project included the sidewalk for that, so.
Any questions about sidewalks? On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 11 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
T. Walt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the Fire Department to accept grant monies from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to purchase some EMS equipment. Officer Bertrand.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Yes, this is a grant through the Firehouse Subs. They were generous enough to provide us a grant of $3,306.24 to buy moving They were generous enough to provide us a grant of $3,306.24 to buy emergency medical service bags that we will carry on all of our ambulances and use on a daily basis. And there is no match with this, so.
Questions for Mr. Bertrand? I see none, and thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And a motion by councilmember T. Walt, seconded by councilmember Well, item 12 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 13 is a resolution approving hazardous materials response agreement with Eau Claire County. Chief Bell?
Good afternoon. In front of you is a resolution to approve the City of Eau Claire and the Fire Department to enter into a, an agreement, a Level B agreement with the county. What this essentially does is it allows the, we contract with the county to provide hazardous material response at the Level B skill level. We're also the Level A team, which is the northwest region of the state, but each county is required to have a individual hazardous materials response team or contract. The county contracts with the City of Eau Claire to provide that service. We've done so since 1994, and the term of this agreement is for four years, which is one year longer than normal, which I'm personally okay with, one less year we have to deal with.
Questions for Chief Bell? I see none. On a motion that my councilmember Clinchammer, seconded by councilmember Von Hayden, item 13 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
Item 14 is a resolution approving a subordination agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the Redevelopment Authority and Northwestern Bank. Mr. Winzenz?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid, members of the City Council. Before you this afternoon is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Northwestern Bank regarding the property at 321 East Madison Street, owned by Phoenix Parkside. The City of Eau Claire and the Redevelopment Authority entered into agreements with developers to develop the property, or redevelop the property at 321 East Madison Street, as well as other properties in that particular, in that particular area. The RDA did provide land to the developers for the construction of these properties. The land was valued at $600,000, is being written down at the rate of 10% per year. Currently, there's $60,000 or one year remaining on that, on that land right down. In addition, the City of Eau Claire provided a maximum development incentive to the developer in the amount of $900,000 for this particular project. However, however, that development incentive is on a pay-as-you-go basis, so as long as the developer meets the terms of the development agreement, they receive that payment on an annual basis. So we're not putting that, that amount at any additional risk by allowing this subordination. The subordination agreement does preserve all the original conditions of the development agreement, such things as that the property remain taxable, that it have a minimum taxable value of all of the properties in the development of $9.7 million, and there's provision for parking leases within that development, development agreement. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions regarding this request.
Questions for Mr. Winzenz? I see none. And on a motion by councilmember Mitchell, seconded by councilmember Strobel, item 14 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have two more items on our business agenda, which the number 16 being a resolution amending the final plat of Hoyum Acres. Mr. Tufti.
This is the Hoyum property on the west side of Preston's, south of West Frank Street, area in yellow, and the amendment request is adding four more lots here to the south. This is the final plat council previously approved for Hoyum 7th, creates 14 lots for single-family development plus one lot for the existing home on the property. And this is the amended final plat for council consideration, adding four more lots to the south, extending the street for access to those lots, or total 18 lots for single-family development, and then again the one lot for the existing home on the property. Our lot 14 is dedicated for stormwater purposes. Our lot 13 is to be owned by the abutting existing home, so they have proper setback from the new street. The new street is recommended to be named Hoyum Lane, so it matches the existing street across Frank Street to the north. Utility easements are indicated on the plat. Plan Commission recommended approval with that change in the street name. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none. And thank you. On a motion that my councilmember Emanuel, seconded by councilmember Beaton, item 16 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
A related resolution authorizes the city manager to amend the development agreement with the Hoyum Family Partnership for Street and Utility Improvements. Mr. Jensko.
Okay, this is the development agreement to go along with the amended plat that Daryl just presented. Basically, what it does is it takes the agreement that the council authorized back in June of 2017 and amends it to include the expanded stormwater facility and then the infrastructure for the road coming to the south. Really, the only things that change in it is an increased financial guarantee to cover those utilities. There's a reimbursement clause so that these parcels that are outside of his plat owned by others, that they can all be split in half, and so if the back half splits and utilizes this infrastructure, then we will assess them a connection fee and reimburse the developer for those shares of the cost. And then the other thing it does is it amends the map that shows where the sidewalk is required for construction along Hoyum Lane.
Questions for Mr. Jensko? I see none, and thank you. On a motion that my councilmember T. Walt, seconded by councilmember Well, item 17 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have one ordinance for, for action tonight, an ordinance annexing to the City of Eau Claire part of the town of Washington called the Grover Road LLC petition. Mr. Tufti.
This is the property located on the south side of Grover Road, west of Tiffany Lane. It's 32.75 acres of land. There is one existing single-family home on the property. The parcel is within the sewer service area of the city. Sanitary sewer and water is available in Grover Road for extension into the property for development. The request is consistent with our comprehensive plan and Plan Commission recommended approval.
Questions for Mr. Tufti? Are there development restrictions along the creek?
Yes. We actually have some middle already in place for rezoning at a preliminary plat that extend a cul-de-sac down to about this point with 15 lots for single-family development. The rest of this is prick bottom that isn't developable.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions. On a motion that my councilmember Clinchammer, seconded by councilmember Von Hayden, item 18 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinchammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. The chair has three ordinances to read for introduction tonight before we begin taking up our budget deliberation. The first is an ordinance amending the general development plan for C3 Commercial 3 mixed use zoning, zoned property at Keystone Crossing to allow for a change to the general layout and additional dwelling units. The second item for introduction is an ordinance rezoning property at 3004 Dryer Road from temporary 1A to R1. And the last, an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the code entitled Sewer Service Charge to Increase Sewer User Charges as Proposed in the 2018 Budget. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these items tonight? Seeing no such desire, the council will move into its budget resolutions. There are many of them, two pages of them, and they begin with item 22. Are you ready or should I wait a minute? Are you ready? Okay. Item 22 is a resolution adopting the proposed budgets and appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 1, December 31 of 2018, the budget for the general fund for the Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library and for the City County Health Department. Do councilmembers have questions for Mr. Winzenz regarding our presentation last evening? Seeing no such questions, discussion is in order, including amendments to the general fund. Councilmember Mitchell?
May I ask a question? I have a question for the fire chief. Should I ask it now or would you rather wait till later? I don't care.
Is it, is it related to one of the amendments?
I guess maybe it is, yeah. I'll wait.
Okay, might be a little more pertinent. As was in our packet, and we well know, there are three budget motions to amend the budget coming our way, and the first is presented by councilmember Emanuel. So we're going to take them in numerical order? Okay, is everyone all right with that? Motion one, two, and three? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that councilmembers Beaton and Worthman have a motion as well. If it would be agreeable to them and/or the body, I could just take mine up, one and three, and then I'd be all done with my amendments, but of course, that's up to the body and/or the colleagues.
I, they just came to us as one, two, three, so I don't know. Why don't we just talk about it? Do you want to go one, two, three, or one, three, two? Do you have any feelings about councilmember Beaton?
I, I can't speak for councilmember Worthman, but I would be fine taking it up, one, three, two.
Okay. And councilmember Worthman's fine? Everybody else? Okay, one, three, two. So, councilmember Emanuel, do you wish to speak to your motion or actually make your motion as there's not a second or listed?
I would. I have a procedural question I'd like to ask first before I move this. I'll just go ahead and put my cards on the table. I actually intend on withdrawing this motion because I learned some new information today. And so I would like an opportunity to either share about the new information that I learned today, or I could make a motion to move this, have a discussion, share more information, and then I could withdraw. So I just would like to have an opportunity to speak about this.
I appreciate that you gave us the insight, and I think the proper thing to do actually would make, as the mover, you can withdraw the motion without a second, right? Without a second? I think I got a nod to that. So as the mover, you can just withdraw the motion, but certainly, we would like to know why. That would certainly be in order.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion to the budget, and it is to amend the 2018 budget to appropriate $6,600 to provide reimbursement to city councilmembers for internet service. And if I can get a second, I can speak more to that.
Oh, I, you, were you going to withdraw this motion? Is that what you were saying?
I am going to withdraw. I'm sorry, I thought you asked me to move it.
Oh.
And then I can discuss, and then I can take it back.
No. I think as the mover, it's your right to withdraw your motion. So you don't have to move it and seek a second. You can withdraw your motion. But in so doing, you, the chair would give you the latitude to speak to the reasons that you're going to withdraw. So I think we're getting there.
I think so too.
Okay.
I can just speak, I'm not going to move it, I'm not going to take anything away. I'll just speak if that's agreeable.
That's, that's great.
Okay, great. As many folks know, I had been working on this amendment for some time. I actually had been working on this since July with the finance director. And just about four hours ago, I learned that there is perhaps another solution at hand that makes a little bit more sense. When I started my council service, it was about, one of the things I learned is that we don't have any offices as councilmembers here at City Hall or any, any place really provided to do our work. It's mostly at home, could also be out in the community wherever you're able to connect to internet. And it's important and essential to the job here in our elected duty to have reliable internet service to read the council materials, to communicate with constituents, to communicate with the city staff, and to do research about important policy decisions. And when the council converted from a paper copy of the legislative packet and went to the iPads, there was not a provision that would provide internet access. And in my time on the city council, it's an important value of mine that I do what I can to help make public service more accessible for all citizens who wish to serve. And we don't know our fellow colleagues' personal situations or background, and I don't want to make any assumptions that everybody can afford to have reliable internet service or not. And I certainly would not want connectivity to the internet to be a barrier for public service. So that is why I brought forth this amendment, to actually reallocate money that's already in the city council budget. It would not increase the tax levy, and it's from a fund that has historically been underspent by the tune of about $11,000 for at least the last five years. So fast forward to today, I learned new information that indeed, we have history on the city council, that we have a former city council member that I, I don't know the situation other than did not have access to the internet when we converted to the iPads, and saw accommodations And depending on the time or the season, there may or may not be an expense. My understanding is if there's extras at the time, that the council member might be able to use one, but the upwards of cost could be somewhere between $0 and $300, kind of depending on the time. And while we don't have anything formal saying that this is an opportunity, this, I think, is a wonderful thing to learn today because now we can share with future council members or future people who look to serve on the city council that there's another potential barrier that can be reduced or eliminated for the service. So, that is the reason why I'm withdrawing that, because I learned today, we actually have a solution. So, I think it's a really great win-win.
And thank you for that. Thank you for putting the picture of the YMAX box up there. Visual aids help. As agreed, then, we will move to motion number 3, which is also offered by Councilmember Emanuel. So far, it does not enjoy a second, so she will be seeking a second. If you would like to first introduce your motion to amend the budget, and then we'll seek a second.
Thank you. I make a motion to amend the 2018 budget for the Fire and Rescue Department by increasing the budget for overtime by $130,000 to allow the fire chief to reassign two existing firefighters to a 40-hour week position to staff a fourth ambulance.
And is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. And further to your motion, Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I anticipate that there will be additional opportunities to learn about this, as one of my colleagues shared that there would be interest. So, I'm happy to have that conversation. Kind of the bottom line for me, and I will be speaking more to this when we have an opportunity to vote, is that there seems to me that there's really an opportunity to offer perhaps the most ideal amount of staffing right out of the gates with this new idea. And that's really my interest, is really out of respect to our citizens and to our staff that oversee this and also work in this area, is to have more than adequate resources from the very beginning. And again, I can talk more about this during discussion time.
Questions of Councilmember Emanuel or you had a? It is moved and seconded. If I remember right, Councilmember Mitchell had a question on this item.
Yes. Could I, I have a question for the chief. Good evening. I tried, I-
Hopefully, that answer lies within-
I tried to ask it last night, but the, I got the public hearing ended, and I didn't get a chance to. Based on some of the information that we heard last night about response time and the impact of changing to a combination station on the, the particular area that it serves, could you comment on whether you are putting the people of the cell site in jeopardy by this move? And how do you respond to the, the fears that were expressed last night by some of the firefighters?
Absolutely.
Paramedics or EMTs?
And, and I received several phone calls from the general public yesterday, throughout the day. And one of their biggest concerns was that they thought that we were eliminating positions from that station altogether. And so, I think there was a big disconnect as to the message that was being provided by the members of the local and what was being received by the community. And we are not eliminating positions. In fact, we're, we're, you know, the goal is to eventually add positions, but in a timeframe and in, you know, when finance is allowed to do so. But we still need to meet the, the growing demands of ambulance service within that community. That section of the community has an increasing rate of ambulance calls. It's a, an aging population that lives within that community, more nursing homes, and a lot of what you heard last night. As it affects the fire service, the, the fire service, we model ourselves after recommendations from NFPA. And within one of those recommendations, it's NFPA 1710, and it talks about response times. And one of the key aspects and goals of response times is that we respond with, for fires, structure fires or any fire-related event, we respond within four minutes to 90% of the calls. And so, as we talk about that, we wonder, we're not going to respond to all the calls within four minutes 100% of the time. It's an unrealistic goal. Many departments struggle to even meet the 90%. We do quite well, but that is growing and the impact is becoming more recognizable. You know, for EMS, it's eight minutes. But we're, we're still trying to make sure that we do that 90% of the time. And so, we talk about the workload. And for our ambulances, and a quick, I guess the best way is, many, many other departments have had the same discussion around the nation. And that discussion is across the country. EMS calls, for every city, they're increasing, more than they are for fires. You know, fires essentially are coming down to about 5% of what we do for response calls. EMS is growing to 85, 90% for some communities. And then there's the other miscellaneous calls that fall in there. We are no different than, you know, Madison, St. Paul, Duluth, and we're trying to meet those changing needs, just as those communities are also. And one of the things that came out of some recent studies through other communities is how do they address those needs, is they do similar approaches to staffing that I'm recommending here. For example, in St. Paul, a combination company, out of their 15 stations that they have within the city of St. Paul, 10 of them are combination companies. Of those 10 combination companies, they run anywhere upwards of 2,500, 3,000, 4,000 calls per year out of that one station. So, I throw that out there just as a benchmark when I compare it to what we're doing and what Station 6 is doing. And if we look at the type of calls that we have and how we measure them, that's about response calls in a year. Right now, Station 6, with its current structure, responding to 50% of the EMS calls that are charlas and deltas, along with its fire response calls, runs about 950 calls per year. By all measure, that's still low. And these numbers represent what the likelihood is us for to meet that 90%. And they talk about low, very low, low, and moderate. And even within moderate, as it describes there, there is some overlap, but you're still able to meet that 90% benchmark of four-minute response 90% of the time. So, with that, even if we were to add this combination company, will probably be about 1,400 calls in total per year for Station 6 in the combination format. That still works within the moderate framework. An example for the ambulances that we currently have, the two most, the two busiest ambulances are Medic 10 and Medic 5. They're currently at 2,700 calls per year. So, we're already approaching the top end of high and moving to very high. Now, what I'm trying to do is disperse the workload more evenly, improve the response times not only for Station 6's area, but for the city as a whole, and to make sure that we have adequate resources, you know, space throughout the city in a timely manner, without unnecessarily throwing another level of service, you know, proverbially, under the bus at the expense of EMS. And by making Station 6 a combination company, we still have plenty of room to grow without detriment to the fire response service.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions for Councilmember T. Walt? A question?
Yeah. For the chief. Thank you, Council President. So, just to clarify, this, this is an amendment you would support. This, this meets your needs.
The original plan that I proffered was to move forward with a combination station without this amendment, as the resources were not currently available to me. As far as allocating the resources now, I'll leave that decision to you to make as to what resources or what, what services you think have a higher priority. Because if this motion goes through, as I believe correctly, cuts will be coming from other areas of the city and the services that are provided. And so, I'm not going to weigh in as to whether this is more important than those.
So, let me rephrase then. So, this is along the lines of your planning. How it's funded, where it's funded, is not a decision that you're making.
Correct.
That's up to us. But it is in line with the plans that you have had?
Yes.
Okay. Just clarifying. I was unable to attend for some personal reasons last night. Thank you.
So, if not this year, I will be making that request next year and the year after.
Sure. Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Member Weld?
Thank you, Council President. With, with the additional $130,000 in the overtime, what does that look like as far as staffing, average day or average week? Or are they there 24/7, the additional staff?
So, the best model, probably the most cost-effective model, would be, would staff an additional ambulance eight hours per day during the week, Monday through Friday. Our run numbers and statistics show that where the busiest times is from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, Monday through Sunday, every, every day of the week. But we have the highest workload in addition to just call volume with training, inspections, and other duties that we perform as firefighters. And so, during the work week becomes the busiest timeframe. And by, by having the 40-hour ambulances, we would staff that Monday through Friday, eight hours during the business day, and we would do that through overtime. That is the most cost-effective way of doing it, as per se, reassigning personnel from the 24-hour operations line over to a 40. We would just backfill this, these two positions with overtime. They would staff an ambulance, they would perform in that fourth frontline ambulance capacity, thus allowing the engine to remain staffed with its three people for all calls, in addition to having that, that fourth ambulance with two additional people during the, the work week. At night, I would recommend that we go back to the straight combination company. And so, that there's still the fourth ambulance 24/7 service continuing to provide that level of coverage for whenever those calls may come in.
So, then roughly 16 hours of the day were a combination company?
Correct.
Is that right?
The 16 hours would be the evening hours, which by all accounts, evening hours and weekends, full days on the weekends. But the evening hours tend to be the least busy for that region.
All right. Thank you.
The member Von Haden?
Just for clarification, so you're not recommending that we approve this amendment. You're recommending we stay with the budget, with the original budget as proposed, the chief.
Be careful not to try to do your job for you. This is a part of a plan that I have over the next five years. It eventually, I wish to get, if funding allows, and that's always the big what-if, to get to where we have a full complement, where that's staffed with five people at Station 6 24/7. This is the first step. Whether it occurs today or occurs tomorrow, it's a part of a plan to get, to meet the , the rising need. Would I say no if you, if you did that, if you approved that, the motion? I wouldn't be in a position to say no. But would I say to approve it at the expense of other departments? That's not for me to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Worthen?
Thank you, Council President. Chief Bell, just wanted to follow up on what you had said about the goals of that fire station to try to meet at least 90% of the calls within four minutes for fire. Are you saying that with this proposal, the proposal on the table, that you would still be able to meet 90% of the calls within four minutes?
I believe so. And, and obviously, we can't predict every day as to how many calls come in. And we say, on average, that station receives two and a half to three calls per day in a 24-hour shift, I think, for fire.
More like two, well, along with EMS. It responds to charlas and deltas.
So, about 2.5 on average. This would move it up to about 3.5 or four calls per day in that 24-hour shift. You know, so even at 1,200, 1,300 calls per year, it's still well within the limits, it's still within the national guidelines of being able to meet 90% of the calls with a four-minute response time.
Okay. Thank you.
Member T. Walt?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question for staff, I believe. Attached to this, we have a spreadsheet of items. My question is explaining the totals and why these items were picked as areas for funding. I'm unclear about the $73,000 cost for the first listing, and if somebody in staff could respond to that, to explain this document, so we understand where it came from, why, and why not somewhere else. It's my-
It might help you to begin with the cover letter as Councilmember Emanuel presents her rationale for funding sources on the-
Was, was this-
Cover letter.
I did read, was that from?
Mm-hmm.
Right. But was this, were these your selections? Oh, no. I, I thought it was staff prepared. Understood. No, no.
But do you, do you still, do you have other input, Mr. Peters, on that question? Or?
Thank you.
I mean, you don't have to, but-
Not, not really necessarily specific questions. I mean, the, obviously, each of the items that are here are part of the recommended budget going forward. There are impacts to each of the areas that are there, and I guess I would certainly address any specific questions if someone have about any specific impact.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question for the chief, and then if all the questions are done, then I can say an item during discussion time. You mentioned that part of the model is looking at St. Paul and the combination stations there. Will you, are you, I'm sure you are familiar with the number of firefighters that are at each combination station in St. Paul. Wondering if you can talk about the number of staff there and how that would compare to the number of staff here in Eau Claire?
Correct. And as much as we try to not compare ourselves too much to other institutions or other agencies, because every, every agency is unique. St. Paul, and they had a recent study, and the study that came out this past summer was you need to refocus on EMS. It's growing, it's growing, it's growing. And so, even contrary to their chief's recommendation, that's, that was the study that came out, and it's a similar study nationwide for many departments. For example, for those combination companies that I speak of, they have four persons per apparatus. So, they have four people who ride, firefighters who ride the, the fire truck or swing over to the ambulance. Personally, for me, it's, that's a bit heavy, having four people responding in ambulance. But we don't run that same model. We run with three, and that's how we run here. And so, every station's a little unique. St. Paul also has a more dense geography. They have quite a few more stations. Obviously, they have considerably high call volume, but they do have a, a backup network where they're, so if they're out on a call, the next due engine or ambulance is, is in close proximity because they're just the, the geography of St. Paul. If we're reaching those levels of calls, this would be a difficult, a difficult venture. But we're not at those levels, and thankfully.
Chief, any further questions then for chief? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, discussion is in order on the motion to amend. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think that there's any dispute on the need or the value of adding additional public safety to our community and to the south side of Eau Claire. I think really what's at question is how to fund and when to fund. And what I'm interested in, based on conversations that I've heard from the public and what we heard from last night in our city council meeting, is that there is a significant amount of interest from citizens to have that funded now rather than at a later time. And so, I see this as really an opportunity to look at our budget and say, everything in the budget is important. However, if we have to, as we, not if we have to, as we make decisions, that public safety is more of a priority than some other items here in the budget when it comes to saving lives. And what I'm looking at is making a budgetary decision and recommendation that funds us now, so that the citizens and the chief and the staff have the resources they need right away as this proposal comes online. I can also speak to, well, I'll just make myself available for questions if anybody would have questions on the funding resources identified, but I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you. I'm not going to support the motion to amend. I, I see that money as being an expense with very little return, even peace of mind. The data is there. The chief explained it very clearly, that they have the staff necessary. When you have 90-
When you have 90% of your calls being EMS calls, it makes sense to have an ambulance there. It isn't in my district, and I'm of an age where I would just soon have that ambulance there as a fire truck, be that as may. We have been faced with the dilemma of shrinking funds and increasing demands for service. We are expecting greater efficiencies and, and more results without increasing staff. The plan that he has, that the chief has in mind for this, we have a 12-month period to see if this is going to work with minimal risk, if any. It's unfortunate that the, I won't say scare tactics, but the language that has been used to describe the downside is so inflammatory that the response, I feel, is unwarranted. We expect more efficiencies from our, from our office staff. What you're proposing cutting in here is going to make a significant difference in terms of what the staff can do in terms of our payroll, and making sure that everybody gets their accurate paycheck every week. Now, is that balanced against what is thought to be the risk? Probably not. If you're going to think along the lines of someone not having the response of a fire, if there is already a call in for EMS services, I don't think we have to make that choice. And 12 months from now, we will have very accurate records of what the performance of that station is as it's being proposed, and we can make a more intelligent decision about staffing. And if we invest in additional personnel to make sure that there's sufficient staff, we have a return on it. Then that's an asset that we have available. This money is not going to return anything. So I definitely will not support this amendment.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President, and would like to thank Councilmember Emanuel for the work on putting this all together, Finance Director and City Manager's Office as well, for their help in putting this together, and for the people that came down last night to speak so eloquently about this issue. I will be supporting it today. One of the things that I think, you know, helps me sort of think about the priority here is the fact that most of the money found in this amendment is from the self-service payroll, which, you know, I think the argument could be made, we have successfully for 80 years, maybe more, done without self-service payroll, and while it would be nice to have, I think it's one of those things that we could potentially push off to a future year, and still successfully run our operation. You know, that, that is the bulk of this. Some of these other funds, including the community service, sorry, the, the Citizens Academy and some others are underutilized. And so, you know, I think if we're looking at the priority here and the ability to try to make this work, I would say that this amendment draws from the right sources of money to try to do that, to try to place this as a higher priority. So I will be supporting it today. But I, I do understand my fellow council members saying that, to them, this is a lower priority than the things that are, than the things that are mentioned here.
Further discussion? Further discussion on the motion to amend?
The chair then will just say that I think that the plan to make Station Six a combined station is a good one, as Chief Bell presented to us and many firefighters said last evening, a combined station in, a, a, a station that increases EMS service is good. I did disagree with the sentiment that divided neighborhoods and even our city in regards to our, our regional EMS. I think it's better to think of the system as a whole and in service of the common good around the whole city, and even sharing, and sharing our resources and our expertise with surrounding communities who need EMS service. I, I think that's a more proper way to look at living together and taking care of each other. I think the plan, as I said, to make the combined station is a good one. And I hope next year that Chief Bell's request for increased personnel, we get, I thought, I hope we see that on our budget request next year as a, a service modification, because it is something I could support in, in regards to an aging and a growing population and serving that common good. But I cannot support this amendment tonight and will be voting no. I'm not willing to forego the funding sources that have been developed. I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to forego the funding sources on the developed and complex budget that has been presented to us to make way for an item that I believe needs a year to be looked at. And we could, we have a year, in my opinion. So I will be voting no on the amendment, respectfully, of course. And there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tiwalt?
No.
Von Haden?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
That amendment fails on a seven to four vote. We do move to our last motion to amend the budget, which is motion number two in front of you. If you'll just give me a minute, I need to find some paperwork. Just one second. Thank you for that. The, the third, or what's motion number two to amend, or the third motion to amend our, our budget for the year is offered by councilmembers Beaton and Worthman. I would enter, do you wish to speak? Are you the speaker of the motion? Yes, you do. Okay. Councilmember Beaton?
So I just wanted to clarify that we intend to move the, the amendment that's in front of us. It's slightly different than what appeared in the packet. After digging into this more with staff and looking at all of our options, we came to, we came to what we think is the better option, so. So I hereby move to amend the 2018 budget for public transit by eliminating the increases in transit fares and increasing the transit fare from, sorry, the, increasing the transfer from general fund by $37,300 to offset the increase in transfer to transit operating. The following budgets are amended as follows. It comes from police patrol parking, an aerial survey of our deer herd, our urban deer herd, and from the community servants, services department, 9,300 of the 20,000 proposed by staff, funds that we, I guess, maybe Jay can explain this better, but funds that we typically spend out of the CIP that would be moved to the, the general fund. To maintain the ability of community services to repair parks, building, buildings and equipment, the capital, the capital appropriations for Fund 450 Parks and Recreation is increased by 9,300 to be funded by increasing the transfer from the general fund to Parks CIP by 9,300, and increasing the fund balance applied in the general fund revenues by 9,300.
And is there a second? Second, and by councilmember Worthman. So discussion is in order now on the motion to amend, and if you wish to begin, do you have a little narrative or?
Yeah, I can speak to the motion. I think that, you know, we heard a lot of this last night already, but I think that data shows that increasing fares results in a reduced ridership. The, this particular increase would result in about 30,000 fewer riders, or fewer rides per year. You know, we're seeing increases as high as 25%, and though the actual doll, the actual cost of increase per ride might seem small to some of us, I think when we add those rides up over the course of a week, we're talking about, you know, $5, $10, $15 for a person. And I think that that is incredibly significant for some people, some of our constituents here in Eau Claire. You know, I, I keep coming back to reading the, the Community Book of the Year, Evicted, and what I learned in, in that book about how some folks, in that case in Milwaukee, but certainly could be applied to here in Eau Claire, some folks have an exact budget. They can afford to forego an extra $5 or $10 or $15 per week. And this increase could, could result in them choosing to go without a meal each day so that their children don't have to go without a meal. It could result in, you know, fewer, fewer trips to work or fewer, fewer trips to the doctor, or having to choose, you know, whether they want to get to work or, or have to pay for medication. There, there are an endless number of things that, that, what my point is that this change in transit fares causes people to make difficult decisions, extra difficult decisions, when they're faced with difficult decisions as it is. I think that in this time, when our most vulnerable population in our city and across the nation are seeing cuts to their aid nationally and statewide, I think that we certainly should not be making cuts to their aid on a local level. And I think that in fact, we, I would love to see us consider expanding the transit system. To add to that, I think that the transit system is an incredible environmental resource that we have in the city and provides an, an alternative option for people from riding cars or going downtown and parking their car and congesting the streets and congesting parking spots. And, and so this alternative is, is something, a sustainable option for people, and is certainly within the goals of the city. So I hope that you will consider it.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid, and thank you to Councilmember Beaton and Mr. Winsens for his help with identifying the sources of funding to help make this amendment come together. I want to bring to your mind a dear friend of mine who I met through gardening down on the Forest Street, at the Forest Street Community Garden. His name is Jay, and someone who struggled with mental health and someone who lived in that neighborhood and managed to live on $70 every single week, fixed income. And Jay was looking after his mother, who has since died of cancer. He depended on the bus. He now actually lives up by the Shopko area, but every week he would talk about how he would take the bus out to the grocery store to the east side. And you got the sense that he really absolutely needed this, and, and a difference in his, in his fare each week would make, you know, a difference in his life and what he could do and how he would get around. We have folks like that in this community. And Jay, actually, I remember, would come down to the garden and sometimes after harvest, he would take home more than everyone else just because he absolutely needed that. And so whatever sorts of food he could get, he would. And so when we look at the fare and we look at the fact that we have 31,000 less rides proposed for next year, I can't help but think of folks like Jay and what it's going to mean to them to not be able to ride the bus. And it's not going to be everyone. Some people are going to make it work, but for some, they, they won't be able to. Our rides in 2008 were at 1.1, roughly 1.1 million. They're now down to 900,000. We're eight years later. Sorry, we're 10, nine years later. The, the amendment on your, on the table looks at the fact that one of the requests is, in, in the budget is 50, was originally $50,000 to help cover the gap in ticketing parking enforcement downtown. We needed roughly 50,000 to make sure that we go from 210 hours all the way up to 270 and fully make sure that tickets are happening all the time. Now, that wasn't granted fully, but because we didn't have the funding, 25,000 was granted. We're saying we could go another year without full enforcement or, or, sorry, even less than full enforcement of this. We understand it's a priority, but I think we could say that right now, people getting on the bus and facing this steep increase for, for, for many, that this could be a higher priority than, than our enforcement downtown. I think the other piece of this, the aerial survey of deer, again, I understand this is not a priority of mine, the, the reduction of deer herds, but even if it is a priority of yours, waiting an additional year to see how we're coming along on our plan is something that I think is doable and can wait. So those are the offsets that we look toward to make sure that transit continues at the levels that it is. I would be one to maybe consider something along the lines of Missoula, Montana, where they actually made the bus free. They figured out how to make that a priority in their city. They have very high ridership. It's conscious in people's mind that they can just jump on a bus wherever they want to and get a ride. And actually, that has been a move that helped them increase their ridership in an extreme way. And so as we're looking at, what are the different ways that we can actually push our ridership up? I would say, you know, absolutely, you know, not this increase at this time, but maybe down the road. What could we do that would actually make it even less than $1.50 for an adult cash fare? Maybe we do public-private partnership, which is something that has a real possibility, and our council president has been a champion of. So we offer this amendment, hope that you will consider it, hope that you will consider the input of folks last night and the Transit Commission, and the, the, thank you for, for your consideration.
Councilmember Von Haden?
This is a very difficult one in many ways, in that it affects a lot of people, but we have to look at the total picture of what we're looking at. Transit is one of the functions within the city. Our tax increase that we're proposing has an impact on all our seniors within the city. And one of the things that contribute to this is the transit system. Our transit system is a wonderful system, provides a lot of service to our residents, but it does cost a fair amount of dollars. In 2016, the city subsidized, the taxpayers were subsidizing the transit by 912,000. It's proposed that this year, a million one. And that's with the rate increase in there. You know, it, it's a chicken and an egg. Who do we hit with the tax for the people? Yes, we're not proposing a tax increase in the other area because we have levy limits, but what it does is it takes away services in the other area as those costs go up. We haven't had an increase in here since 2009. Now, maybe in some of the cases, the amount we're looking at here, you know, I'm looking at, you know, we talk about the elderly and the disabled, and the proposal there is that it's, you know, going from a one-time bus fare, going from 75 cents to 85 cents. Yes, it is a dime. There's no question about it. It does cost. But it is a nominal. My suggestion... My suggestion is that we approve the rate increases as proposed. We then take a hard look at what can we do to provide assistance to the, the citizens that need help with their bus transportation, not just them alone, but all the seniors in the community that are having. As Councilmember Beaton said, there are citizens that have to make a decision whether they're going to buy medicine, or take a bus. In this case, are you going to buy medicine? Or what are you going to do? Because if my tax bill goes up, I don't have the dollars to pay for my medicines. So overall, this is a total thing, so I think we have to take a hard look at the total package, not just one of the individual things within there. I think the areas that they're proposing cutting, yes, there's some things that could be in there, but I think these were analysis made over a long period of time by our staff, and I think it makes sense for us to stand with the budget as proposed.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you. I've been bothered by this debate since it first came to the Transit Commission, and I couldn't figure out exactly why I was bothered until I read the emails that we got and listened to the, the people last night, and I think we're asking the wrong question. Whether to raise fares or not to raise fares, to me, is not the question. What can the city do to make transit more accessible and affordable to the people who are in poverty, the low-income, the vulnerable people in our community? To me, that's the question. And that's something that Councilmember Von Haden is, is talking about as well. He's talking about the elderly. We do give some reduced rate to elderly and disabled. I'm talking about another group of people, the really poor people in our community. We ask ourselves all the time, what can the city do to mitigate the effects of poverty? And we kind of wring our hands and say, well, not a whole lot. Well, this is something that I think we could do, and other cities are doing it. The Twin Cities is doing it right now. They raised rates, and then they turned around and developed a plan whereby people who meet certain income levels can ride, in their case, for a dollar. So I'm going to be supporting the fare increases tonight, but in two weeks from now, Councilmember Weldon and I are going to come back with a resolution for this council to consider, to ask the city manager to work with staff and the Transit Commission to develop a plan that will provide reduced rates for low-income people, however we decide eventually to define that. I, I think that's an opportunity, this discussion has opened up that opportunity. Otherwise, I'm not sure that it would have happened. Transit Commission said, eh, don't raise fares, but that doesn't get us anywhere. There are people who can't afford to ride the bus right now, and they need some help with that. So that's my position.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you. I have a question. I guess I have a couple of questions. One from Mr. Wagner. But he's napping, I guess. Mr. Wagner, thank you. What percent of the riders buy their fare in monthly passes, or, yeah, I guess we have just monthly passes, because the proposed fifteen-ride pass isn't available yet? Do you have any idea?
The percent of rides, that's difficult to determine. We could show the percent of revenue that we take in from a monthly pass, but the number of riders that are actually paying individual fares, it, it, I mean, it would vary, you know, how many different people. We don't have numbers on how many different people are paying these fares. We only have total numbers.
Okay.
So that would be difficult to come up, but we could do a percentage of all the revenue comes from full fare.
I should have thought of this the other day and asked, have you researched that?
Sorry.
I apologize. The other question, I guess, would be, I, the suggestion that Councilmember Mitchell put forward, and Von Haden, has strong merit, and I would support that, and I would approach it much the same way, but if, I would support this if it, if the thirty-seven thousand came out of the transit budget. Can we shift the funding for this to the transit budget, rather than from the other services that were listed here?
I guess I would have to say that wouldn't be my decision. I mean, the only way to do that would be to cut services. You have to lower expenses, so you would have to cut services. So if we're looking at trying to provide the best service possible, taking it out of the transit budget would then reduce that service that we're currently providing. I guess that's the only way I could answer that.
Well, it would appear we're going to reduce services elsewhere regardless, so, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you, Council President. I actually have a question for Mr. Wagner as well, sorry. Last night during our public hearing, it was suggested that perhaps there might be a reevaluation of the contract with the university if this decision is made, and I just want to, I wanted to ask what kind of impact that would have on the transit system, and, you know, if that contract were to change, or if it were to, you know, change so significantly that it was even eliminated, what kind of impact would that have on a larger system?
If the university contract were eliminated?
I guess, we have no way of knowing if that would happen, or how it would happen, but if it were, what kind of impact would it have on the larger system if that contract was changed, or eliminated altogether?
Well, the, the contract with the university providing, is directly related to services provided to the university, so if that contract were to go away, then those routes would have to go away. So that, that's how that would affect that. If, if increases to that contract would probably result in increases in services to the university. So the, what we receive from University of Eau Claire is directly related to the hours of service that we provide to the, to the university.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I'm going to take, and I'll get back to you. Councilmember Weldon.
Thank you, Council President. And again, I think, I think that, I think we all want the same thing, from the sounds of it, both starting with the amendment that was created by Councilmember Beaton and Councilmember Worthman, that there is a need for affordable bus fares, and, and obviously, there's a, a demographic in our community that, that cannot afford a rate increase, and I think we all believe in that and, and trust that, and certainly don't want to make their life more difficult. You know, but at the same time, I, I still think there's a need to continue on with the services that we have. I don't know if reducing our, our, our transit budget is, is the answer, because I think, I think the real answer is, in addition to what we're proposing, is, is increasing ridership, and finding a way to do that, and certainly eliminating services isn't, isn't going to allow us to do that. And I think that we really need to focus on, on the next year, you know, in addition to what we're going to evaluate, is, is, is the system itself, and the efficiencies of it, or inefficiencies of it, and can we make it better, and how do we do that? And I, I think it will become probably more active part of our discussion, obviously, if, if, if we're fortunate enough to, to be awarded the Tiger Grant, and, and we can proceed with the, the Transit Center, that, that again, will hopefully steamroll this into a, a stronger action. But I, I am in agreement, obviously, that I, I think I would oppose the amendment, but look forward to coming back to, to the council with something that would create this affordable fare for our community. Thank you.
And Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I just wanted a quick opportunity to speak to Councilmember Klinkhammer's question. So we actually, we did consider making a cut within the system, and, and though, you know, we came to the conclusion that cutting within the system and cutting services is maybe not what we wanted, we, I, I think even a bigger motivation for not taking the money from within the system is because to do that would require a much higher cuts, more than thirty-seven thousand, as I understand it, and, and maybe we can ask Jay to, or Mr. Winsens to clarify, but as I understand it, these increases in the fares actually forgo state and federal funding, and state and federal money that comes to us for the transit system. And so in taking money from the transit system itself, it would actually require us to make like over eighty thousand dollars of cuts to the transit system. So, Mr. Winsens, maybe, would you be able to more accurately, or eloquently explain that for us, if, if it's needed?
Oh, the, I'll, I'll wait if Councilmember Klinkhammer wants more, other than, you did, you did a good job, actually, so. Further discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the conversation that our body is having tonight around this issue, and I know that when I started on council and talked about poverty, it was actually about the Transit Center, the Temporary Transit Center. I was laughed at and told that we don't deal with poverty in this community, and that's not our wheelhouse, and now here we are, talking about public transportation. And I think there's a sentiment that it is in our wheelhouse to care and serve and figure out effective public policies that serve and lift up people out of poverty. I heard somebody, a citizen, share last night that we have a duty here in Eau Claire to speak out for those in poverty, and I really appreciate that sentiment, especially in our community when we have close to one out of five people who are experiencing some type of poverty. What I'm hoping is that we can continue to grow the sentiment around how do we increase our revenues in public transportation. It's a really important policy opportunity that we have, and I think that really takes place with looking at multimodal transit plans, and we've got a strategic planning process coming up for the City Council, and so that's an opportunity to make an intentional commitment about how we can better improve our public transportation. We also have a transit development plan that's slated here in this budget, that we can look at that. And so really thinking about what are the meaningful ways that we can infuse additional dollars into our public transportation system here in Eau Claire. What we have before us today is a fare increase without a way to mitigate that soon. And even if we, even if the body works quickly, it's likely that it would take several months before a, a more permanent solution would be ready to go into effect. And so I will be supporting this amendment today because our current reality is what we have now, and I see that we have adequate funding resources that have been proposed that really act as a funding bridge between now and next year, when hopefully we have perhaps some additional ways that we can capture revenue without burdening those people who are experiencing poverty in our community.
Councilmember Strville.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not going to support the amendment tonight, and I will support the fare increases. For several reasons, I think Councilmember Von Haden makes a good point, that the subsidies are large for the transit already, and, and those subsidies do affect other services within the city. And since we haven't increased rates since two thousand and nine, and they're very minimal, I, I think I would go back to the slide also that Mr. Winsens showed last night, that our general fund increases in spending was about one point four percent, one point four six percent, but the amount that we spent subsidizing transit was over five percent, so it's about three and a half times that that has gone up in, in that period of time. So I don't think the city's neglecting transit. I think, I think we're actually increasing our subsidy a little bit more than we are the rest of the services, so.
And Councilmember, oh, any further discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Council President, thank you. I appreciate as well the discussion this evening from my fellow council members about affordability in transit. I would point out that if, if there's ideas for low-income riders and how to make it more affordable, again, we're going to be looking at the same, it's going to be the same conversation that we're having tonight about how do we make that up? In, in an era of levy limits, and debt service, and all of the restrictions that we have, how do we make that up? We are either going to cut within transit, or we're going to look somewhere else, and we're going to make a priority decision about what's important. Right now, in front of you tonight, we're making, you know, we're putting a proposal forward that essentially says, you know, a weighing between parking enforcement downtown, and whether or not we want to get more people on our bus. And those things are actually related, believe we, you know, because the more that we do to help more people be on our bus, the less problems that we're going to have parking downtown. So those are, that's really the priority decision tonight. Other council members may have other ideas in the future on how to do that, but I would say, to Councilmember Emanuel's point, that at least for the next year, we've put a plan in place to make sure thirty-one thousand less rides don't happen. If you vote for the fare increase, I take our transit manager and others at their word that we probably will see a decrease, so.
Other, any further discussion? Okay, we're ready. Please call the roll. An aye vote adopts the amendment, adopts the motion to amend.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
No.
Klinkhammer.
No.
Mitchell.
No.
Strville.
No.
T. Walt.
No.
Von Haden.
No.
Weldon.
No.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
That motion to amend fails on a seven to four vote. We are now back to our agenda, which is still item twenty-two on page seven, and as is our custom, on a motion by Councilmember, I think I'm round to, do you want to make this motion?
To move the entire budget?
Sure.
So moved.
Okay. And seconded by Councilmember Beaton. Item twenty-two is moved, and discussion is then in order. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to speak out to my appreciation for, I'll use a word I used last night, but a hard grind to get through the budget season, and I have a feeling that a lot of people will be able to walk out of this building and say, oof, that's over, have a little break, and then tomorrow, the city business still awaits everybody here at City Hall. I am really still interested in, in looking at how we do process improvement around our budget process. When I look out into the audience this evening, I don't know everybody in the audience, although I think we might have four members from the public tonight. Two of them are my family members. And I, I think Eau Claire deserves more. I think Eau Claire is really interested in how we make financial decisions, and having their input there. And so I just want to say that I, I really will be looking at ways that we can increase civic participation around our budget process, and also for the council processes, to look at additional ways to work through some of the amendment process, or, or, you know, really trying to support the manager. the amendment process or, you know, really trying to support the manager in his or her charge to present a balanced budget, and then also finding room to make amendments that are reasonable and honoring kind of all the resources that we have here. So just wanted to share a little bit of what I'm thinking.
Councilmember Von Hayden.
And I'd like to thank our staff and our department heads for the, all the effort and the work they put together, and then the city manager and the finance director for bringing all the things and finalizing it. It's, it's a long process, and there's a lot of hard work that goes into it. There's a lot of decisions. As was shown last night, there are items in the budget that were eliminated because we don't have the dollars. Unfortunately, in a climate where we have limitations on tax increases, which are both good and bad, I mean, we, we have to be very careful on how we do this. My emphasis here, and this is what I, I really want to make the point of, is that the resulting basic increase that we have in our tax rate has to do with capital borrowing. One of the things that we have to do as we look forward is we do need to continue our growth and expansion in the city. We're very positive, there's a lot of things that are happening, but at the same time, we've got to be very careful on how we do that to try to instill more private-public partnerships so that we can reduce the borrowing by the city to hold down the tax increases to our elderly and the ones in the community and the low-income people that are having a hard time meeting it. There's been some articles referencing as rents go up, people having a hard time making their payments. Well, rents relate to increase in property taxes and other costs. And so all of these things, as a city, we've got to look hard and continue to do it, and I hope that our city manager and city staff will continue to work very hard to hold these down, and Mr. Solberg out there will do his best to keep the capital costs in line. But again, we do have to go forward, you know. Our modernization of City Hall that we're doing, these are all positive things for the city because they should create positive image that will continue to produce growth and jobs in the city. And if we don't increase growth and jobs in the city, our taxes will just continue to accelerate. And so this is where it's very important that we work together, both private and public, to do the best we can for the city of Eau Claire.
Thank you. And further discussion on resolution? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 23 is a resolution adopting proposed budgets for various agencies, letters A through X. I hope citizens are, can see the agenda online. A through X is a long list, but do council members have, or do you have a presentation on these items, Mr. Winsens? On a motion then by Councilmember Tewalt, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 23 is moved and discussion is in order, budgets for various agencies. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We now skip back to item nine, as, as approved in an earlier amendment to the budget, a resolution amending the city of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and license effective January 1 of 2018. Mr. Winsens.
Yeah, last evening, we had a, a presentation on the fee and license schedule and the proposed changes to it. There are various changes that would go into effect January 1 of 2018 in several different categories, which again, I went through last evening, the most notable of those being the transit fare increase, which was discussed extensively by the, by the City Council this evening. We did indicate that moving this, or taking action on this on the agenda this evening would, you know, keep the budget and the fee and license schedule in, in coordination rather than waiting for that adoption for two weeks, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Winsens? I see none, and thank you for that summary. Oh, Councilmember Weld? I guess not. Sometimes I miss the lights out, I apologize. And on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, item nine is moved, discussion. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to remove the transit fees from this and take it up as a separate item, kind of like how we do our consent agenda.
Let's see. I don't know what to do with that motion, to remove this, the segment on transit fees. Can we do that?
I would take it as a motion to kind of separate the question. I guess it's a, it's a decision of, of the chair. I mean, it is, it's also susceptible simply to a motion to amend, which is the one I would recommend, but, but that, I think is at least the request by the council members, so. Those would seem to be the procedural options. To me, it, it's a group package, the entire resolution is before you, and so at least my recommendation would be, we move to amend an item and it, and handle it that way.
May I ask if that, if your intention is to amend or to have a chance to vote separately? Do you understand?
My intention is to vote separately. I, I'd like to vote for all of the other fees and just separate this one out per previous comments.
Okay.
Seconded.
Then the, the chair determines the proper motion, is a motion to separate the question on transit fees. Is that, is that okay? And seconded by Councilmember Worthman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Councilmember Strobel is opposed. The motion passes, though, and the fee and license schedule is considered minus the transit fees. Any discussion on the fee and license schedule without the transit fees? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye. And then the motion comes before us to consider the transit fees as a section of the fee and license schedule, as is our habit. On a motion by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, the transit fees are moved. Is everyone clear? Okay. Discussion on, any more discussion on the transit fee? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
No.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
No.
Emanuel.
No.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
And that motion passes eight to three. Okay. Now we're on to item 24, for those of you who are following, a resolution levying special assessment charges and extending annual installments of 2017 special assessments. Mr. Winsens.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. The resolution before you this afternoon simply takes the special assessments that are due and collectible for year 2017 and extends those onto the property tax rule so that those amounts that are due and payable show up on property owners' tax bills as such and can be, can be collected by the county treasurer when the property taxes are paid.
Questions? I see none. And a motion then by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 24 is moved and discussion. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 25 is a resolution appropriating the 2018 capital projects identified in our 2018-22 adopted capital improvement plan. Earlier in the summer, we had several work sessions regarding our CIP. Do you have further presentation, Mr. Winsens?
Just very quickly, what we're asking you to appropriate this evening are the 2018 projects that are listed on, beginning on page J1 of your budget document, also would be listed the same in the, in the CIP, so it's just the 2018 projects that we're asking you to appropriate funds for.
Thank you. And on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 25 is moved, discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 26 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds and authorizing an officer to declare official intent for federal income tax purposes. Mr. Winsens.
This is a resolution that we asked the City Council to adopt on an annual basis, which essentially allows us to move forward with capital improvement projects for which we intend to borrow funds at some future date. This allows us to expend funds and then use the proceeds from debt service at some point in the future to reimburse ourselves for those, for those expenditures. If we didn't do a resolution like this, we would have to wait until we actually borrowed the funds before Mr. Solberg could run out and start, and start spending those funds on, on capital projects. So this, this authorizes that reimbursement, it doesn't commit the City Council to borrowing any certain amount of funds. All of the bond resolutions would come back to the City Council in the two-step process that, that we've used historically, probably be looking once again at that May-June timeframe when we'd go to market and, and borrow the funds.
Questions for Mr. Winsens? I see none. And on a motion by Councilmember Tewalt, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 26 is moved. Discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our final budget resolution is a resolution approving the 2018 budgets for business improvement districts within the city of Eau Claire, South Barstow, West Grand, Water Street, and North Barstow Medical Districts. Do you have, no. The amounts are listed on the resolution on page 132 in our council packet. Any questions by council members? Then on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, item 27 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Finally, we have two ordinances for adoption tonight regarding our budget. The first, an ordinance amending the city, our pay plan and practices. Ms. Selson gave us a presentation last evening. Any lingering questions? And on a motion then by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 28 is moved, discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. And finally, an ordinance amending the employee benefits and leaves plan. Any questions? I assume we're going to have some whiter smiles in City Hall, I suppose, so that's good. On a motion then by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 29 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. And the chair wishes to speak on behalf of the City Council to thank Mr. Winsens and his staff for another finishing of a complicated process. Announcements are in order, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to thank the City Council as well as the staff from Finance Department and Mr. Winsens for the hard work on the budget. It is a long process, it's hard work doing this budget. We have increasingly limited resources, there's an increase for demands, and it does force discussions on difficult choices, and it's, it's challenging work finding the balance between resources and needs, and so I appreciate all of the work that went into this on behalf of the council and the staff and Mr. Winsens. As far as some other announcements, it will snow, and we are preparing for that snow. Thursday is our Community Services Media Day and Education Day, and at 11 o'clock, we invite any of you that would like to come down and see the equipment and, and look at the, at how we go about preparing and managing snow and ice events. We can put you in some equipment, you might even get to drive it a little bit, I'm not sure, we'd have to. But certainly welcome to come down, and it's a very important service that we provide to the community, and, and it's a great opportunity for the community and council to come down and see how we do that and what we do and, and ask the questions that you might have for it. And then Friday at 11 o'clock, the new causeway going to Carson Park is opening up, and at 11 o'clock could be the ribbon cutting for that, and would certainly welcome you to come down and see that. It's a really, if you haven't seen it yet, it's an impressive improvement to, to a gateway to one of our pristine and, and, you know, impressive parks for the community. And then finally, next week's Thanksgiving, and I'd like to wish all of you a safe and happy and healthy Thanksgiving with your friends and family.
And likewise. There being no further business. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
What time is the Media Day at Central Maintenance?
11 o'clock on Thursday.
There being no further business.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
What time is the Media Day at Central Maintenance?
11 o'clock on Thursday.
Thank you.
That's okay. It's fine. Okay. And Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a, a question I forgot to bring up during the consent agenda that maybe I can be, if, if I may, I can ask about some information that was not in the consent agenda that I was curious about in the, as it pertains to last meeting's minutes. If I may, I would ask my question.
As such, a, a point of information, I guess, is out of order if we were going to be very strict about it. But the chair's in no mood to be very strict, so she will allow your question.
Thank you, Madam President.
It's a point of information?
It is.
Okay.
I, I made an amendment, or a proposal at our last council meeting, and in the minutes it was reflected that I, basically that I made an amendment, but there was not the language of the amendment or the proposal in the minutes. I'm wondering if that's customary to not include language that's proposed, or if it is, then, then it stands, but if it's, was an inadvertent oversight, I'm wondering what the proper way is that I would ask to have that included in the minutes.
I don't immediately know the answer to that question, but I will work with the city clerk and find out, A, what is our custom, and if we didn't adhere to our custom, that we correct that. Okay?
May I ask another point of inquiry?
I think so.
Okay. I, if it's, I just wanted to share that I, I won't be here at the next council meeting. I have a longstanding family commitment, and so I wasn't sure if it would fall under the need to, like reconsider at the next council meeting. So I won't be here procedurally if that's what the solution is. So that's why I'm, I'm kicking myself, I didn't bring it up early. I, I meant to and I forgot to. But I also realize that there's sometimes certain, certain timeframes. So if today is a more appropriate time to do it before we adjourn, then I want to just seek the possibility to do that.
I don't think there's a time limit on correcting minutes, but if there is, I'll make an exception to that. We'll make sure that the minutes are corrected, even in your absence, or we'll wait till you get back. If that's, or if I find out that that's our custom and is consistent with ordinance stuff. Is that acceptable?
Yes, thank you.[1732.13]